And I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda? Are you kidding me?
So moved.
Oh, my goodness.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Show everyone you're strong.
I'm just confused, who?
Sean made the motion, Maura seconded.
Okay, I thought I heard you.
And we'll grow up. Sorry.
Bye. Nothing. All right. Are there any walk-ins here this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the report of the town administrator.
Report of the town administrator. In your package you'll find the latest water construction update from the DPW. That'll be posted tomorrow morning. You guys get it first. Lots of stuff going on, but mostly the ice pigging and the ice water flushing and that's all going on. These are from the Route 3A project. Stuff we're getting out of the pipes, as you can see. They were fairly congested with iron and manganese. We flushed actually most of that pipe twice, or pigged it twice. But that's ongoing. We're down the Driftway, we're moving around. We've done four out of the nine zones for the flushing. That's gonna continue till it gets too cold or we run out of water, but we are on track to finish that before the cold water, or cold weather gets here. Gannon Road, Manla Road, and Booth Hill are all ongoing. Again, we'll post that tomorrow so everybody'll be able to see it. The water study results are supposed to be available by the first of the year. We may have some preliminary results early, and if we do, we're gonna try to schedule a meeting on that so we can get a look at what those look like before the town meeting in November. The fields, we didn't have a field meeting last week, but the fields are still on schedule. If you go over there now, all the lights for the stadium field are up. They put the last light pole up. The lights on the remaining of the fields have been getting put up. They're not all up yet, but they are ongoing. The work on the stands continues. The concrete work is almost done for that. Hopefully those will be ensured, and we'll get an update tomorrow. And the field work is just ongoing. That's weather dependent. If it's raining, they don't do it. If it's not raining, they're out there working. So we are still on schedule to have that done for the Thanksgiving Day game. That's the big thing. You get your water tonight, you get your capital recommendations for the special town meeting tonight. Those will all be posted on the website tomorrow. There'll be a special link on the homepage for the special town meeting documents, so people will be able to go on and find those pretty easily instead of having to hunt around and try to find them. We created a link. We'll be posting all those over the day tomorrow, so people will be able to go and look at what's gonna be up for the special town meeting in November. And finally, I wanted to congratulate one of our labor lawyers, Jamie Kenny of Clifford and Kennedy. She has been named one of the 2019 Top Women of Law by Lawyers Weekly. They do, John and Jamie do our labor work. They're very good, and this is just a good award for Jamie, and it shows that we do hire some really good people to help us with our work. So that's all I have for tonight, 'cause I know we have a full agenda.
Congratulations.
Karen, anything for Jim?
No.
Maura?
No.
Karen?
No.
John?
Nope, thank you.
Jim, what's the status of the Sand Hills Sewer Engineering?
Engineering bids are due either Thursday or Friday this week.
Okay.
So they were sent out to select a bunch of firms, they do back this week. So then we'll pick a firm, we'll get going.
Okay. So anything, probably won't start till the spring, or the engineering will be done?
The engineering, we will work over the winter time with the engineering. They'll get started as soon as, I mean, the contract's gonna have to go back to you guys. I'm gonna guess it's gonna be over $50,000 on that project, so they'll go through it, and hopefully for the next meeting they'll have a contractor, and they'll be able to get going. They can work out winter on the engineering.
Did they expand the scope of it to go down Oceanside at all?
I don't think, I think Oceanside's gonna be a separate project.
Any other projects, updates? Okay.
Chairman?
Yes?
Question to the town administrator in reference to the town, to the lawsuit. Is the plaintiff's vote in order?
What lawsuit?
The plaintiffs have filed against the plaintiff's board.
They've appealed the decision. I sent it out to you. They appealed the decision on the counsel aging.
Counsel aging.
Right. Do not discuss, will not discuss, pending litigation and open session. So the board, we can schedule an executive session for the board, and I can fill them in on that, but it has been filed, and we'll deal with it. I do not see it right now impacting the schedule for the senior senator.
All right. Our first topic for this evening is to amend the date for the 2020 Annual Town Election. The town clerk, Kathy.
Deja vu.
Yes?
Yeah.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. So before I had asked you or requested that you change it to May 30th of 2020, the town election, I had dotted my i's and crossed my t's and thought everything was in a row before I can go online to their new portal at this high school and book the gym. However, after booking and after the vote of the board of selectmen, Jim informed me that he had met with Mr. Griffin, and there's a conflict in their scheduling, and they have the SATs on June 6th, which would normally be the weekend of graduation. So they moved graduation to May 29th and 30th. So those two days that I had wanted booked for the town election are done. And so, because the SATs have to go on as scheduled on the 6th. So that puts us now at June 13th. So that is my request tonight, that you consider changing the town election date to June 13th, which is a Saturday of next year.
Does that fall within the parameters of?
Yes. You know, years ago, all the conducted business for the year had to be done by June 1st. Now it's July 1st, so we have plenty of time.
Doesn't the election have to be so many weeks after the town meeting, though?
Well, because you're voting, it would have to be a special act, and so we'd get permission on your approval. It would change only if we got approval from the governor, which is, if we start now, we're likely to get that in all set. And that's why I didn't, I asked that the dates for the nomination papers stay the same as they would as if it was on the 23rd, because this happened in 2015, and I got approval for the legislature on April 17th, which is two weeks after nomination papers were due back to my office. So we keep the dates of nomination papers the same as if the election was on the 23rd, but the special act, if approved, will allow us to go to June 13th, so.
Any questions?
No, I was just gonna say, can we, it's got to do, we can change the date of the town meeting, right?
You can only by state law postpone the annual town meeting. You can't have it earlier. And so when you look at, I was gonna do that, I was gonna ask that you guys change the date of town meeting, but then you run into Patriots' Day is the following week, because it's April 13th.
Right.
The following week is Patriots' Day. And then you run into, what was the other thing? The following week?
Weekend.
Yes, I think that's what it was. So I said the easiest way is just do what we did in 15. And coincidentally enough, in 15, the election fell on May 23rd, and I asked to have it postponed to May 30th, which was really strange. But we had a special election or a double election in June. I wanna say it was in 16 or 17. It was the first for me. And so we had it as late at one point.
Because we can change the date of town meeting without changing the charter.
That would be a bylaw change. If you wanted to change, and if you look at previous times, we've had town meeting on a Saturday before.
Right.
When I first started here in 2006, I think it was on Saturday.
Really early.
Yes, and so it's all changed for reasons. You know what I mean? It never, there's never a perfect time in the spring to have a town meeting, but if you go back in history, there's been times when it's been on a Saturday, it's been in March, and the state law will tell you the months that you have to have it in. I think it's, I don't wanna, I don't wanna guess, but if I had to, I think it says February, March, and April?
That's probably right.
If I remember looking at the state law. But so here we are. Don't, I'm looking at 2021 as we speak, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
My only concern was graduation, but you answered that.
Yeah.
I think it's interesting that they're moving it up back. I'd rather swap with them.
I know. And it's funny, when this new online system they have to book elections and town meetings, I have to go in and book the setup day, and it was not easy. It's not an easy thing to work with, even when you get used to it. Took me an hour to get into it. And then you have to book up the day of the, book the day of the event, you know, because you can't have anybody use the gym while you've just got it set up. And that was another, and I was like, oh, yeah. So, but it all came together, and it's booked for the 13th if we need it.
Do we know the last day, I mean, graduation will be on the 29th. When's the last day of classes? Does that, it'll be before that?
And it's a Saturday, yeah. It doesn't affect.
The last day of classes as well after graduation?
Yeah, I know, I just. Yeah. Yeah, but it's Saturday, so it won't matter.
That doesn't matter.
Okeydoke.
Sean, anything?
Nope. Nope, thank you.
Okay. All right. I don't have any questions. Jim, any comments?
Nope.
All right, can I have a motion?
Move to change the date of the 2020 Annual Town Election from May 30th, 2020, to Saturday, June 13th, 2020, upon approval of the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Second?
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Good job.
Thank you.
Never easy.
Welcome.
Okay. The next item is to waive the fees for special event administrative fees. We have Michelle Wood. Dewey? Hi, Michelle. And Amber Bynum will be next. So you are from the Harbor Merchants Association?
Yes.
So tell us what you'd like.
Well, it's a free event. We're asking for the fees to be waived. We've had them waived in the past. And so, in parts of town, like where I live in Sand Hills, there's, a lot of the houses are empty, so these kids are just walking around with no houses to go to.
Let's take one step back. So this is for Halloween?
Halloween.
So you guys do, all the merchants in the harbor do this great event?
Right.
Where they open up the stores, and the kids can go trick or treat on Front Street on the night of Halloween?
Yes.
From 4:00 to 6:00 or something?
Four to 5:30.
Four to 5:30. Great. And we, there's an administrative fee that goes along with every event that groups sign up for, and you're asking for us to waive that fee?
Yes.
As we have in the past?
Yes.
Great. Any questions?
No.
No.
I'll make it easier. No?
It's a great event.
Best, best thing.
Yes. Thank you.
Great. Any comments for the audience? Seeing none. Can I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen waive the 10% Situate Police Department and DPW administrative fees for the 2019 Halloween in the Harbor special event.
Second?
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks.
Ms. Burbine? This one's gonna be a lot tougher.
Yeah, we're gonna be here a while.
Might actually.
Anne Burbine, Tenpin Chris Road, North Situate Merchants, requesting that the fee, I believe it's $100. Is that the fee?
We moved, we changed it.
I think it's a percentage, isn't it?
It's a 10%.
10%, yeah.
We already waived the $100, we moved it last year.
Right.
This is something different.
It is? This is different?
This is 10% on top for the fees for police and fire and DPW.
It's an administrative fee that we charge, on top of the actual cost of the details.
But they pay for the cost of the details anyway?
Right.
And this is just a paperwork fee? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, that's what we're looking for. I'm gonna let you vote on that first, because then I have something else I'd like to bring up.
Not on the agenda, Anne, I'm sorry.
Hey!
So tell us about this event.
It's Fall for Situate that has been up in North Situate for the last eight years. We're having a tractor ride, with or without hay, I'm not quite sure. We have the Doc Ellis Band, we have farm animals that are dressed up, for whatever reason escapes me.
Oh, Anne, it's fun. They like it.
They like it. Well, we won't invite PETA. At any rate, we have a fortune teller and a face painter, and we have some chowder, some food, crafts. What stores are up, they will be open, and that's what we're up to. It's from 11:00 to 4:00, a week from this Sunday, and according to the news, it sounds like it's going to be a gorgeous day.
Good. Wonderful. A week, it's this Sunday, isn't it?
Oh, it's this Sunday, right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Coming Sunday?
The 20th, yep.
What was this week? This week.
I heard the words Doc Ellis Band, and I'm not sure that they received an outdoor entertainment permit. Was that in your application? Probably not. Okay, so I just wanna make sure that we've been very strict about outdoor entertainment permits, particularly in North Situate. I know. So. I'm sorry, can you also consider that for your vote tonight?
Sure. Where are you gonna have? What are the hours?
I think it's two hours, and I'm not sure what time. Jean sent, set all of this up. I'm just the one that unfortunately signed the application, so.
It's usually in the parking lot, though.
Yes, it's right in front of the WPA building.
So that's where the whole event is gonna be, right?
Pretty much, yes.
There's still gonna be the arts and crafts kind of stuff?
Yes.
And the food?
Yes.
The jumpy house or whatever. I know the playgrounds are now, so.
We don't need a jumpy house, we have the playground.
We do.
Yes, beautiful playground.
So I think we're gonna need some details on the hours of that, so.
I can call Lorraine tomorrow and let her know. He's only playing for two hours.
What's he about, go from?
12:00 to 4:00.
11:00 to 4:00.
Could we just grant the outdoor entertainment license from 12:00 to 4:00?
12:00 to 4:00. We can do 12:00 to 4:00.
And then whenever they show up, they show up. Right.
If he can play from 12:00 to 4:00, that's awesome.
There you go.
Where's the money go to?
It basically, what we're collecting pays for what we're doing.
It's run by the North Situate?
Merchants.
Merchants.
Yes. There aren't a whole lot of us up there anymore, but that's another story for another day. One of the things that I did want to bring up, and hopefully you will give me this waiver, there's a new list of DPW support. You know, a laborer now is $50 with a minimum of three hours. To rent a barrel is $100 each, and normally we've had three barrels. And we have to do a $200 refundable deposit for the horses, the wooden ones. So between the police and GPW, what I don't understand, and forgive me, when we hired a detail last winter for Christmas, it was under $50 an hour, with a four-hour minimum. And now the DPW person is $50 an hour. I'm not sure what that's all about. Basically, what I'm trying to say, and probably not particularly well, is that when we get through with what we have to pay, it will be close to $1,000 to the town of Situate to have an event, to bring in people, about 2,500 of them, to North Situate, to hopefully see what's still up there, which I find that somewhat onerous. I really do.
What are the fees in?
$100 a barrel. We need three barrels. Probably one DPW worker, and it's going to be, it's a minimum of three hours, and we will probably have him for six, so there's $300. There's six, plus probably close to 400 to 500, which I don't question at all the detail. We have one detail. So it's $1,000. It's a lot of money.
So the part that you don't like is the DPW worker paying for that?
Yes. Why, why are we renting a barrel for a hundred bucks?
You don't have to. You can get your own barrels.
Tony? Sean, why don't we just set up the barrels Friday?
Right.
Regular time. Come back Monday, regular time. I don't think the sawhorses and barrels are gonna get stolen.
No.
Regular time, so why would we even need detail?
Isn't it the labor of someone picking it up?
No, it's, it's the beach. It's like, you know, it's, three barrels, is that all you generate, is three barrels?
Can't you just?
That's not a lot.
Get the Situate trash bags and haul it, I mean.
You know what, it reaches.
Been there, done that, I'll plan a special event.
I understand, but it reaches the point that with all of the time and energy that goes into planning this event, and I can remember having done Heritage Days of actually sweeping the street myself.
I understand.
And my thing is, I don't mind paying, but, you know, a police officer, and I think the DPW is wonderful, but they're not of the same, I'm paying without.
Well, I'm just trying to make it more economical, and you don't, you have to have, I don't think you'd have to have DPW on the scene at that time, because weekends would be time and a half, and rightfully so. They're entitled to it, like a police officer or fireman or anything else, but, you know, if they can bring the stuff Friday, and maybe it's a lot to ask of the merchants to drag them out and put them where they want them, and then Monday, you know, just push them to a side, and Monday, they make their route and just pick them up.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know why you're, you need them for six hours. I don't understand that part of it, but.
Because we have to have, he, who, last year we did have a DPW person. I paid the bills. We did not pay, we didn't pay it. This year, and he was there, he was wonderful. He emptied the trash barrels periodically.
What are you talking about right now? Heritage Days? Or are you talking?
No, Fall for Situate. And he emptied the trash barrels as time went on, because they do fill very quickly with all those people. So, you know, if that's how it is, then that's how it is, and I think that we'll have to think long and hard about next year, because, you know, we're collecting money from the merchants. A thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Well, the $1,000 isn't for the DPW person. You just said you understand the police component of it, and that's gonna be half of it. So, I mean, if you want the guy there to empty your trash and move the barrels.
And we pay for them, I guess.
It's a Saturday, like Sean said, and it gets paid time and a half.
I don't think she should have to pay for the barrels, though. If it's $100 per barrel, I mean, really? I mean, come on.
If we wanna redo our whole, I'm not prepared to redo all of our fee structure right now.
Yeah, I do.
If we wanna look at it another time.
When, when did you come up with this?
I remember this changing.
I, when did this fee structure come up? I'm.
Several months ago.
Several months ago. Well, I missed the memo. Sorry. And then all two, never, it doesn't matter. Whatever bill we get, we'll pay.
You know, it does matter, because I think anybody who's doing these events is trying to help the town, and, you know, I think that the town needs to be cooperative as well. On the other hand, we do have to pay people, so.
I fully understand that. I do, Karen. I fully understand that. And so I'll make the check out to the DPW, and at the risk of sounding snarky, 66% of that will go, it will go into the general fund, and 2/3 of it goes someplace else. So I'm not quite sure I understand any of this.
You did sound snarky. Ms. Canfield?
If I recall correctly, the reason that we wanted to redo the fees was more intended for, there's been so many road races and more things that are not generated from the community to support, you know, business centers, things like that. That's why we did it, that's why, in my recollection, which is, could be suspect. So I get that. I think that having the local merchants supporting an event that brings people into town is its own category, or maybe we have to revisit, but I would support waiving the barrel fees, going with Sean's suggestion, and then having the merchants pay for a DPW guy, because it is what it is.
It is what it is.
I think would be a way to acknowledge that this is, this is not a separate charity coming to town using our resources. This is a community-based effort. Would be my suggestion.
I agree.
Well, I mean, are we gonna go to Heritage Day? Are we gonna go to every other? Halloween people have barrels?
I think so.
So.
Will they be the regular barrels?
I don't think so.
Would they be the regular barrels?
Only regular don't have barrels.
You have the option not to do the barrels. Just get your own barrels.
They don't have extra. I don't believe.
I, I'm not in favor of changing the fee structure on this discussion. You know, in the past, all we've ever done for any event is waive the administration fee. And I don't have a problem doing that. It's a great event, I go every year, but I don't wanna nitpick DPW's not worth this amount, so we're not gonna give them this, and we're gonna give them the barrels.
That is not what I'm saying. That is not.
That is. But.
No, it's not.
Well, no.
It's not.
Not in this last comment, but you did prior.
You know what, Tony? You and I can agree to disagree.
So we'll read this. If you guys, I mean, obviously, you guys vote however you want, but I just think we're opening up a can of worms if all of a sudden we're looking at our fee structure for one event and changing it, because every single event that's come before us would have asked for the same thing. And I don't have any problem looking at the fee structure and looking at it again. I don't remember us just doing any, any fee just for one type of event. But I could.
No, we came up with a structure that if you want X, you pay Y. If you want, you know.
Right.
To pay for the services.
You pay for what you ask for.
So do you need three additional barrels?
That's what we've had in the past, so apparently we do.
Three additional to what's already there?
I do not think that, there might be a barrel in front of the playground, and I know that there's a barrel across the street where the fire hydrant may or may not go, so.
All right, I'm sure you could work with the DPW and minimize the number of barrels that you need. I mean, they're not trying to charge you if you have other barrels around.
Again, you and I are oil and water, so we're not gonna go down that road, okay? So we're not going to go down that road, okay? We're not. We're not.
I don't think it's personal. I think we're trying to be objective and be fair.
Okay, I understand you being objective and being fair. I've worked Heritage Days, which is a whole different can of worms. And I know that Heritage Days paid for the dumpster. Heritage Days paid for DPW to have the people there to empty the barrels and to do all that because of the 10,000 people that were there. This is a very small event in a very small village for three barrels. So if you feel we need three barrels, if it costs me $300, then it costs $300. I object to it, but I'll pay it if I have to. I absolutely think it's outrageous, but that's just my opinion.
Right.
I was going to suggest that I, you know, work with them and connect with DPW tomorrow and work on the amicable following the policy to Sean's suggestion of possibly having a drop off dirty business hours on Friday, picking it up on Monday, so we're not bringing in DPW workers on all the time over the weekend.
Well, are they still going to work there to unload the barrels?
Right. That's a different fee.
Or not? You don't need that. That labor, so that labor's still going to be paid. It's just the $300 per barrel.
Right.
That's what I tried to say a second ago, so.
I, I, I would make a motion to waive the fee on the three barrels, period. And then pay the DPW and the, the police. I think it's a lot for this small event, and I think she's right. It's a, we don't want to have an event where we have trash all around either. So that's not enough, that's not the option. Just to not have.
Kevin's point was barrels disappear, sawhorses come back broken, sawhorses don't come back. No one blinks an eye when you say, well, you're going to have a police detail, here's the cost of the police detail, but you have to have a DPW worker down there. Well, there shouldn't be a cost of that.
I'm not debating paying for the DPW worker at all.
So, you know, we are, we do have to replace these things. We have to buy new sawhorses. We have to replace the barrels.
You think someone's going to walk away with a barrel?
You'd be surprised.
They have.
You'd be surprised what people walk away with. You might not be, but you'd be, you'd be surprised what people walk away with.
But isn't there a deposit for that? No, just for sawhorses?
The sawhorses.
Just for the sawhorses.
Yeah.
So Karen raises a good point, right? In the future, maybe we need to look at, look at the barrel fee as a deposit fee. A hundred bucks per barrel for a deposit fee is excessive.
Well, they get it back if they return it.
Right. But that's not how it's structured right now, correct?
No, by now, they'll pay for the barrel.
Yeah.
Now it's just you pay for it.
Yeah. All right.
Sure. Anyone want, any other further comments?
I'm going to take them in twos. Move to Board of Selectmen approve.
Well, excuse me, point of order.
Yes.
Can we clarify the hours because on the motion, it says 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and I thought you said 11:00 AM.
It's 11:00, 11 to 4:00.
Okay.
Okay. Well, all right, we're going to do three separate ones then. So move the Board of Selectmen approve waiving the 10% administrative fee for Situate Police Department and DPW for a Fall For Situate.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve an outdoor entertainment permit for a band, for a amplified band at Fall For Situate on October 20th from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Move that the Board of Selectmen waive the barrel rental fee for DPW for Fall For Situate event.
Second.
Is that clear, Jim?
Yep.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Board of one.
Thank you.
Interview for Boards and Committees, Suzanne Brennan.
Hi. Suzanne Brennan, 18, Curtis Street.
So everyone have their books?
Yep. Did any books?
So you are applying to be a member of CPC?
I am.
Tell us why you want to do that.
So about a year and a half ago, I joined the Recreation Committee and was appointed the liaison to the CPC. And what I found is the CPC does really important work because the money goes into a bucket. The CPC has to decide how that money is spent. It's important work. They look through all of the financials. They value, they look at the value to the town, and they make, they make very reasoned decisions. It's a great board. They do terrific work, and I'd love to join it.
Right. Any questions?
Well, I'd like to say that I've, I enjoyed working with Suzanne when I was on CPC, and I think she has a real understanding of what CPC does, and I was very happy to hear that she was interested in it. So the Recreation Commission's loss would be CPC's gain, but I think it's a worthwhile trade, so I thank you for putting your hand up.
Thank you, Karen. And, and the Recreation Commission has been fantastic. Getting the fields through was such great work by everybody on that board and, and the Rec Commission. So that's been really rewarding.
Took a village.
Took a village. And many years.
Yeah.
Maura?
I don't have any questions for Suzanne. I think it's a great move for her. I think it's important to put people on committees where they get a certain amount of enjoyment back from it and feel really invested to it. And I think Suzanne will do a great job, so I have no doubt that she's a fine candidate for CPC.
Shaun? No, just thank you for stepping up.
Appreciate it.
I worked with Suzanne as a liaison to Rec, and you did a great job there. So are you going to resign from that post?
Yeah, I'll have to. I haven't spoken with Maura, but yes.
Like Dan Family did.
Oh, good.
A couple, he did.
Yeah, he did that actually a year ago.
Couple of years ago.
Yep.
Great project because you learn, you know, Rec is involved in a lot of CPC things, so you get a lot of firsthand experience doing it.
Got it.
Clearly, there's other buckets, so it's not all Rec stuff going on. But, but you do see a lot of it being the liaison there. So it's a great committee. We've done a lot of great things over the years, so I think you'd be, you know, a very good partner for it, so.
Thank you.
I got nothing but good thanks, Suzanne.
Appreciate it.
Great. Well, we'll vote later on this evening, so.
Okay.
You don't have to stay.
Tune in. It's on what time. We're live on TV, Suzanne.
Yeah, well, I have to watch the Nationals, so.
Okay.
You're on 10.
Thank you.
So there's another person that is running as well. Meg Stillman, who was supposed to be here tonight, but at the last minute, she couldn't come because she had another commitment. Many of us here know Meg and can speak to her. So I'd like to just have a brief discussion because we want to vote and fill the committee tonight, but she's not here to speak for herself, so.
Well, I personally have known Suzanne, Suzanne, I have known Meg Stillman since probably 2005. She's been very active in town, PTO co-president at Hatherley, ran the Holiday House tour that benefited all the public, all the elementary schools for years. She is a teacher in Cohasset. She also served on the Council on Aging. She's a wonderful, sensible, feet-on-the-ground person, and I personally asked her to consider CPC, and I was very happy to hear that she would. So she's a very committed person, and I know she'd do a good job.
So Tony, if I look at this correctly, we have two people that want this as their first choice, and the other couple of folks are, it's their second choice, so it could be pretty easy.
Yeah, yeah. I just, she's not here, so I don't, does anyone else know? I know Meg.
I don't know.
Yeah, so I'm...
You know them as well.
She's done a great job on committee. She's been on, one thing that Karen alluded to is she's also a doer.
Yes.
You know, she's, she gets her hands dirty and does stuff, and she's had kids growing up in town, so she knows all of the, all of the needs and all of the, you know, different niches of, of the town. So I think she'd be a great choice as well.
Yes, I agree.
Do you know her as well?
Yep, I know Meg, and I've worked with her on committees throughout the years, and she's professional, she's diligent, smart, objective, which I think is always important, and has the best interest of the town at hand. So I think that's also important.
Okay. So as Sean pointed out, we'll vote these later, but there's a couple of positions open, so got a couple of people running, so.
Okay. Great.
All right, moving right along. The next discussion and vote is for Construction Inspection Services, the contract with SW Coal Engineering. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Shaun.
Shaun.
His fans.
Right. Yeah. We've used SW Coal since we started the water reconstruction projects back in 2014, 15. A lot of the inspectors that they can supply us are retired Mass DOT inspectors, so they're familiar with road reconstruction utilities. Two years ago, we involved them in one of the three seawall contracts that was going on at the time. So they're very versatile. It used to be Tibbetts Engineering, and it was sold to SW Coal. They're a bigger, a larger outfit. However, this, we started to use them earlier this year, and the contract limit is set to expire, so we wanted to set a new dollar value for the year and have the versatility to bring in new inspectors if need be. We have one covering a water project currently, right now. So with some new water projects coming up, there's going to be a lot of FEMA restorations coming up, revetment work, seawall work. To have that extra person available would be a big help to the department. I can't set myself out there all day. And right now, we're short an engineer on an extended leave. That leaves the two of us.
Okay.
Just one question.
Shaun, are we comparing apples to apples with Coal and GZA? Like the qualifications of that person from Coal at $65 an hour versus the other firms?
Yeah, those...
Is that all, are they all the same?
Yeah, they do have different steps available in terms of Construction Administration, if we wanted to bring them in to do that rather than just construction oversight. These are the guys on the ground overseeing the work, preparing daily logs.
So these are the clerks of the works?
Correct, on the project, yeah. I'm in daily contact with them, especially when an issue arises. Yeah, very open for discussion. They get me involved very early on. We've asked that a lot of the inspectors we used over the last three or four years come back. They, they got to know what we expected of them, to reach out to residents. They're not just watching the pipe go in the ground. They're communicating with residents if they have issues a day ahead, two days ahead. So it, that was one of the requirements when we spoke to them to renew their contract, if they could supply people we've used in the past. They understood what we expected. Those other rates provided were all part of the response to the design.
Right.
You see, some of the other costs are significant, depending upon the staff.
Who you call in.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, for their expertise. From 65 to 110 were the construction inspectors.
Right.
Any other questions? Karen, Maura? Karen? So why did you show, why are the prices, why are the other ones here? Just for comparison purposes?
In, from the, from the company?
No, we're only voting as SW.
Correct, yes. That was just to show you that we, we reached out to other people to offer construction oversight services during the project.
Did they decline?
No, we went with the cheaper.
No, the rates are higher.
Yeah. Oh, but they're old rates.
I was just going to say that.
They're from 2017.
That's when this project went back out. This was specific for water, although we've been using them.
Oh, so these are the original bid responses that we're looking at for the rates? I just thought that was odd that they're two years old.
That, right, that was when the, actually, when we first went into contract with them. That's how old this is.
Okay.
It was renewed last year to stay with the same company, and now we're reaching a contract dollar value limit. So we want to keep them on the project, but we want to extend the upper limit of the contract.
Gotcha.
Which is over 50.
And they're honoring the original, the rates as is?
Correct.
The rates haven't changed?
At 65, right.
They didn't go up?
No, they've gone up. They were up in 2015, they were at 58. And then when we renewed, and it probably had to do maybe with the sale of the company to SW Coal, I think they were 75, and we talked it over with them, and they, they were, they would take 65. And then once we compared it with some of the other companies, not only do we have their prior experience, they had a, they weren't as expensive as some of the other firms that could provide the service. We've been happy with them. Their reports, their drawings following the construction have been priceless. Water Department reaches out constantly for our records, and now that we're switching over to a lot of digital files, the Water Department will have tablets in sewer. All those files are being uploaded directly to their tablets. They'll have them in hand.
Good. Great.
They've produced some good records for us as well.
Kevin, do you have anything to add on SW?
No, we've had great luck with them. A lot of who they hire are retired Mass Highway project managers, so they've got plenty of experience, and they can really supplement, especially when the water contractors break up into two or three crews, we can use them to supplement that man column.
Any questions?
Nope.
Got a motion?
Answered. Vote to approve the contract to provide construction oversight and inspectional services to SW Coal Engineering for an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shaun.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are going to discuss the Capital Planning Committee report. Chris Kasha?
We have him.
Give us just one second, Chris, to get organized.
In your path, we put all the special town warning articles.
So is there, there's no written report, Chris? You're just, just a verbal?
Exactly. Just took the vote an hour ago.
Can't take you anywhere. So we're talking about article three. Okay.
So if you go into the list of the articles, it's six items?
Six items.
All right, you got the floor.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Chris Kasha, Chairman, Capital Planning Committee. Tonight, the report of the Capital Planning Committee is, I give you the overview, unanimous to recommend all six items on the capital plan for November Special Town Meeting. The items are as follows, and in the order they are in my notebook. The facility study, looking for an amount of $208,225, $208,225 from free cash. This is a study for all of the buildings not currently under another study. It'll, in the end, give us a 20-year maintenance plan for those facilities. The listing is, is included in the attached documents. I don't know if you have that listing or not. The next request we had was the Water Department for $175,000 for water meters. Their existing water meter capital project has $5,500 remaining. With all the new developments, the Water Department needed additional funding. They spent $100,000 last year for the purchase of meters and capital planning, the capital plan did not, did not fund this project for FY '20. So this is to fund them to keep going with their water meter replacement and new meters for new construction.
Jim, do you know how long that inventory will last?
Really depends on what happens, but last year, we appropriated $100,000.
We didn't appropriate it.
We didn't do anything last year.
It lasted several years.
Depends on what happens.
And I'm sorry, so if we go to single meters for all of these big developments, won't we run through them faster?
Maybe. You would, so a five-eighth meter costs about $235 on the card bid. So if they're only buying a five-eighth meter, they can buy a goodly number of them. Will they run out of money?
Might be a stupid question.
Charge them more for them.
If we're not going to get so many that they could get outdated, and they might have new technology.
They buy in small increments.
All right, thank you.
Next item was the Water Department, water pipe replacement. They're looking for $3 million from borrowing. This was a, to replace the oldest and problematic water mains, targeting the smaller two-inch mains and install new hydrants as needed. New ductile are in water mains, haven't expected useful life of 75 years. So this is $3 million. He's targeted a bunch of roads. I just gave my packet away to somebody else, so I don't have the list of roads. But it is right there. You could name all.
Well, I'm not going to be able to name them all, but there are a lot of roads, like Foam Road, that are the two-inch galvanized lines that have been identified for a long time. And then we also identified the neighborhood where, like, Utility Road is. We've had multiple breaks on Utility Road. I think we've had three the past year, and we want to do that neighborhood also because we know the transite pipe that's there is in very poor condition.
And lastly, were they dead-ended? Like Shadwell?
Some of them are dead-ended, and one of the other things we're going to be able to do is put hydrants at the dead ends of those. So if you want to know the streets, what we're asking for, I can actually tell you.
Just the area. Is it still about a mile for every million dollars?
Well, this is, the thing is, this is about 8,800 lineal feet just for the small streets, but they're all over town. just for the small streets, but they're all over town. You have Barney Briar Lane, you get Cedarwood, you get Chittenden, Claymore, Drew Place, Eli, Foam, Hamilton, Jericho Lane, Lanton Lane, Marion Road, Pine Brook. So they're, they're just scattered all over the place.
So it's three million dollars, what'd you say, eighty-eight hundred meters?
We had eighty-eight hundred feet.
So that's a mile and a third.
Right, but then we also have the whole Utility Road area too. Which is Utility Road and all the streets in that neighborhood.
Included it, plus that?
Plus that, yes.
So maybe a couple of miles?
Plus hydrants.
Yeah. And the hydrants, the gates and everything else.
How long do you think this will take?
You know, it's, it's probably going to be one crew chugging away probably two or three months' worth of work.
Oh, that's it?
So one season?
Yeah, it'll be in one season.
That's one year's capital plan.
One year's capital plan. And like we've been talking about is we were, we were shooting for two miles a year, you know, just continually. So eventually we'd, we'd have a turnover. It's a long-term outlook, you know, fifty years, forty years before we get everything replaced, but it's a good, it's a good starting point. And we upped the, instead of the two million, we upped it to three million in the request because Utility Road kept breaking in that area there. So we know that's in bad shape.
Okay. Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Does that, will that include repaving those roads because they've been dug up?
We'll, we'll be repaving those roads with a combination of water money and Chapter Ninety money and our paving money.
Because I had a big complaint from someone on Utility Road about they were feeling neglected and their road hadn't been redone for a long time, so it sounds like this is a good way to...
Well, it, they, it was feeling neglected because the line had broken like three times just at the beginning of Country Way and we've been patching it back together again, but it's just, it's just getting too thin to keep going with it.
Well, that's good news for those neighbors.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But keep in mind, Kevin, you want to remind those folks that there's a moratorium. So after, if we pave from gutter to gutter, they're not going to dig up the road for five years unless they pay five, ten thousand dollars.
If they want to switch over to gas, do it now.
Or don't do it at all.
Get a watch on our way.
He retracts that.
He was thinking.
I'm afraid I didn't make the joke. What's the moratorium on?
Well, we don't want...
Yes, hookups right now. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right.
Speak now or forever hold your peace. Yeah. Do what you're going to do.
Right.
Moving on.
Moving on. The next request was from the IT Department. We have a new IT Director and apparently he found a bunch of missing things. So his request is for a hundred and ninety-two thousand from the capital. This is out of free cash. He did a PowerPoint presentation that I have not witnessed, but Nancy has seen it three or four times now.
Once was enough.
But our newest member on capital planning is familiar with this sort of thing. He read through the, the request. Other than it being a, the most thorough request I've seen in the seven years I've been doing this. It was very, you know, our new member said it was, you know, right on target as far as what he's looking for. There's software licensing, there's, software licensing, I know there was servers. So in your bag, there's a page that lists everything though. Next thing we had was for continuing on the security upgrades to town buildings. This is all the buildings that were not funded at Springtown, Springtown Meeting. They're looking for a total of three hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy... Multiple funding sources, water, the water enterprise retained earnings, they'll pay for their share, sewer articles. So there were multiple funding sources, but again, there were needed upgrades and this finishes off all of the security upgrades for the town.
Chairman, ask a question?
Yep.
Was this above and beyond what we anticipated in the spring or did we plan on coming?
We planned on coming back.
Okay.
Yeah, we planned on coming back.
Double check. Thank you.
The last one I have is for the Fire Department for the Hummer Rock Station. In short, the funding was approved in FY seventeen. Due to the increased cost of construction requirements from conservation and the need to make this building flood resilient, project will require additional funds to complete. And the Phase Two Living Quarters he'll address in F law, spring of 2020.
What's the total cost of the station?
Total, total cost of the...
Do we have that?
I think it was over two hundred the first time.
I thought it was going to be three.
For the station.
They have a total budget of four twenty-four.
Okay.
We've funded, we funded three twenty-six. He's looking for an additional ninety-eight, eight seventy-five.
Right.
Again, the committee voted unanimously for all of these.
Everybody on the committee?
Everybody on the committee. Everybody on the committee that was present for the vote.
Great quorum.
A quorum, a quorum.
And there were no, no...
So, no, there were no objections. There was, there was our usual healthy discussion, but really they're, they're continuing projects, so there was no objection to them. The security upgrades, you know, the numbers seem a little weird. Twenty thousand dollars for security upgrades to the WPA building, but, you know, we can get, it takes an executive session, you know, you guys know, to get the details on that. I know advisory may get into that. I'll sit in on it just to update my committee if they do, but the experts say this is what it costs.
Great, any questions for Chris?
No. Thank you.
Chris, thank you for getting the committee together and getting back to us so quickly.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving ahead along, we are going to discuss the Special Town Meeting warrant.
I think that's next.
Yep.
Yep. So the articles and the sign-on warrant articles to select. All right, so we've talked about most of these and we just haven't voted them yet, so I want to just start at the beginning and kind of go quickly through the ones that are... Why don't we vote it first and assign it? Is there just a list of them or is it...
Yes, I provided you a list of them today. It's a double sided, one page.
This one?
Oh, this one, okay. Great, so everyone's looking at this page. So unpaid bills, number two is reconciliations, number three is the capital stuff we just talked about. They didn't come for us, did they? Capital?
The department heads? No.
No. Can I ask one question?
No.
Don't we usually list when we're doing budget reconciliations where the money's coming from when we're moving it? Because this all just says to, doesn't say from, like where we're pulling it from?
It's in the motion, so I have that information for you.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is not...
Great, that was my only observation last night was that I don't know where we're taking the money from.
Right. Do we have a copy of that anywhere?
You don't have your motions, I can certainly go over it with you because Article two depends on how you vote rates tonight, if you vote rates tonight, because that would change where the funds would come from. It would have to come from retained earnings and not from receipts.
So can we move to the timing? Do we have another meeting before the special? We do have one.
This has to be signed and posted tomorrow legally.
Okay.
So tonight's the night. I didn't have, I think there's... Will the motions depend on what the vote is tonight?
Right, so I think we're going to want to look at that. Maybe you can print it at some break in the meeting.
We can go over it if you want. It's not going to, it's not like it's a one involved...
I mean, most of it says where they're coming from next to it. So most of these are the additional state aid that were coming and that's where most of this money is coming from. It's not getting transferred from a department to another department.
It is coming from the additional funding.
That's what you're looking for more, that we take it from this department to this department. This is just the additional state aid numbers that we're getting for the most part.
Okay.
So it's not being taken from Peter to pay Paul, it's being taken from an additional available pot of money from the fiscal twenty, fiscal FY twenty budget. Sorry, I started fiscal twenty-one.
We're getting additional funds from the state.
Let's just go through them each.
That's fine then, that's what we're...
Yeah, that's where it's coming from.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me just to run down them?
It's under your reason, right?
Yep.
Yeah, what are the, let's start on one. What's the twenty thousand dollars of the unpaid bills?
So we don't have any unpaid bills, knock on wood, somebody. What we do have are two amounts of due to the town, one for a grant reimbursement that we're never going to get from 2016 for emergency medical dispatch training, which is nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and one cent. Every year on our free cash, our free cash is reduced by this outstanding grant. We have been informed by E-911 that we will never receive funds, so we need to resolve the fact. In that year fiscal sixteen, we had enough funds left in the police budget that we could have covered it had we known we were not going to be reimbursed. So it isn't like an unpaid bill would require a nine-tenths vote to resolve. And the other one is...
Where's the money coming from?
Free cash. The other one out there is a five hundred and nineteen dollar, forty-nine cent engineering review escrow account. That's in the negative. So a bill was paid for an engineering review sometime prior to 2007. This has been around at least since 2007. I can't trace it any farther back than that because I don't have a system that goes back before 2007 for Walden Woods, not the current owner, and I don't believe it was the previous owner, I believe it was the one before that. We will never be reimbursed for the five nineteen forty-nine. They have tried to get it over the years and were unsuccessful. Again, we take an annual hit on our free cash for this amount because it's, it's showing as a deficit on our accounts.
Is there any money, is this police or fire, the first one?
The first one, it's both.
Is there money in their budgets to cover it?
Not without having to take some type of remedial action later on in the budget, in the year to put that money back.
Put the money back in their budget.
They can't take a nineteen thousand dollar hit.
Any questions about the escrow shortage? No, all right. So number two.
Number, Mr. Chairman, okay to run down?
No, I don't.
The eight fifty, nine fifty is the rideshare funds from Uber and Lyft. So if the state's giving us our money, this money, we just have to appropriate it. The twenty-eight thousand dollars for the inspections, you raised...
When you say appropriated, it's going into, it's a positive into that budget?
Yes.
It has to go to some sort of highway or transportation-related account.
In the way the laws is currently written, the town meeting has to take some action even though it's a small amount.
Okay.
Okay.
The inspections department, when they were before you to raise their fees, they were, they spoke to also about covering the cost. They would have to revisit their budget to change the inspector rates because they were having problems retaining as well as recruiting inspectors. So that has occurred. We spoke about this in financial forecast and they amended their local receipts. So this will come from raise and appropriate, the local receipts for permits have, would be increased and we've almost completely recovered this already so far this fiscal year.
So this is not coming from free cash?
Correct. Nothing in this article is coming from free cash, capital. The seventy-five thousand for contractual bargaining and the forty-six thousand, three hundred for software licensing costs, which is the non-capital portion of the IT Director's issues with our licensing, would both come from the increased state aid and financial forecast. Did vote to recommend to use the additional state aid. That's the same for the school department budget. That is their portion of the additional state aid we're getting and basically in the Chapter Seventy lines that were increased.
What's the seventy-five thousand dollars for?
It would be set aside in the Board of Select and the Town Ministers contractual bargaining for anticipated and unanticipated retirements. The Board may recall back in June, July, I was before you, when we had three retirements on June thirtieth and we had large buyouts that we were not prepared for. This would give us a little bit of buffer towards that. If it's not used, it will just close up to free cash at the end of the fiscal year.
Is the forty-six thousand in addition to their capital item?
It's in addition to the capital item. It's the non-capital portion of that.
Portion of that.
And you're going to see this when we go through the fiscal twenty-one budget, that this is going to be an additional amount we're going to have to pay annually as part of that budget.
This is the licensing for the Office 365?
Mm-hmm. Sewer Enterprise, Transfer Station Enterprise.
Hold on.
Sorry.
Everyone good with the school? So the school is using this for bus leases, right?
No, this, the school is just using it to support their budget.
Oh, this, no, what did they say at the meeting?
The two forty-two.
The two forty-two, was that the sped stuff?
Sped stuff.
Yeah, so this is going to sped. They're going to, is this what they're using to start the stabilization?
No.
No, they said, there's some increased sped costs issue that they really haven't been able to handle within their existing budget, would have been like given a lot of times.
As Nancy just said, we had a forecasting meeting a week and a half, two weeks ago, where we found out we got more state aid and it was split two-thirds, one-third, and this is, the school's using theirs for sped stuff and the town's using it for these two things above it.
Good.
That budget?
The sewer and transfer station, we've spoken about these during the rate discussions two sessions ago. The sewer, the three lines are based on their fiscal nineteen actual expense. Their current fiscal twenty budget is insufficient to even meet what their fiscal nineteen actual expense was for electricity and chemicals are basically fixed costs. Repair and maintenance is, there is some disparity to that. Transfer Station Enterprise, I think we have not discussed hauling costs, so I won't go back over there.
These are coming from rate increases?
Well, it would depend on the Board's vote tonight. If they don't come from rate increases, if the Board decides to move forward with them, they would have to come from their retained earnings. Wales Walk Golf Enterprise is having a wonderful year. I am so happy to report.
Yes.
Yes, knock on anything you can find. But because of, they're having a wonderful year, they do have additional costs for repair and maintenance, the maintenance building, this is going to get the bulk of this, twenty-one thousand dollars is being requested and this would come from their receipts. Their receipts, they're almost at a half a million already. So I want to say they're almost at half what they need for the year to meet their, just their regular forecast. They have had the best first quarter since they've had since 2008.
That's great.
Right.
That's a real testimony to that committee.
So there are reports in your boxes that show the happy graph.
That's great.
And then there was a...
Usually don't have happy graphs, so this is a pretty good thing.
Yeah, if you have happy revenue, I do a happier revenue graph. The Town Arena Pilings Project.
Smile face on it.
Basically. That's ongoing down in the harbor that's funded with the Seaport Economic Advisory Grant. There's, and then they went back for amendment to that grant for the increased costs. As the Board is aware, there's been some difficulties with permitting in that particular project. They are now moving forward to finish it and they are short by two hundred thousand dollars in order to finish the project to meet the current permit requirements and the delays that have put on it. Waterways Committee does not wish to go back to the Seaport Economic Advisory Council for the third time and ask for additional funds when they have other projects they would like to approach to them for funding. So even with the additional two hundred thousand, it'll still be seventy percent funded by the Seaport Economic Advisory Grant rather than the eighty percent that was originally anticipated. Of the two hundred thousand, we've identified a hundred and ninety-three thousand of other capital articles that can be applied to it, so there'll only be just over six thousand dollars in retained earnings. And this was reviewed with the Harbor Master as well as with Waterways Committee members.
Are those capital projects, waterway projects?
They're all waterway projects, yeah. They identified them as available to be applied to this project. And two of them are real specific to this whole area, like electrical upgrades that are being done within the project, so they weren't going to need to, to use that project at all because of the works being a separate grant project.
And where's this six thousand coming from?
Their enterprise retained earnings. Waterways enterprise retained earnings.
And did you say we're good to move forward on that?
Jim?
Did the permitting get taken?
Yeah, it's getting ready.
Yes?
Yep.
Good.
Thank you, Nancy. That was great. Article three, I know Chris just went over these. Do we have any other questions on the fire station? Another hundred thousand dollars for that. The total project is four twenty, something like that?
For this phase, is that what I understood? There's going to be more money next?
For the bay.
Just for the bay?
This is a, this isn't even a construct, isn't it like a...
I think he's changed everything.
Yeah, modular prefab up on pilings.
Is it still a prefab?
Yep.
The same company that's built, that wanted to build the...
No, we're hoping, we're hoping we're going to get better bids. When we went out to bid in the middle of the summer, I think everybody was busy, so I think bidding this out after town meeting in November is going to give us some better bids and we might have some companies looking for the work in the spring, so.
But this amount of money is paying for the old bid? Like, how do we know we need a hundred, ninety-eight more?
That's what the old bid came in, so we have to go, we have to kind of rebid it because we had to reject the bid, but we know what it costs. We're actually hoping it'll be better because again, the more we're going out to bid should be more advantageous than when we went out to bid before. In November, December, contractors are looking to line up their spring work, so.
Questions? And where's that money coming from?
I would have to come from free cash.
I, I just would like to get a handle on this project. It seems like it's, you know, at some point, can we get like an official update as to where it is?
Yeah.
What is it? What's happening? It just seems to keep going from, oh, it's only going to cost us two fifty, to now it's going to cost us six hundred.
The residential park is back on the capital plan, so.
Okay.
And that doesn't, that's not included in this?
Nope.
Okay.
Some of the, so the electrical work that will be done on this will, will cover the other part, so we won't have to do electrical twice, so there's some, some overlap, but not a whole lot.
Plumbing maybe?
There's really not a whole lot of plumbing in the bays, so. But that, if you remember, that whole building got flooded.
Right.
-in the March storm. Enough flood, but the water went right underneath it. We had ice underneath the living quarters.
Yeah, there's no doubt it needs to be done. I just feel-
But I, no, I agree. It's kind of ameaboring into something, yeah.
Who's the project manager on it?
Chief Murphy's running it, then he brought Vertex in to help him with the bid documents. They're not an OPM specifically, but they do help with the bid documents.
Thank you.
The security upgrades, this is to the other buildings that haven't been done before?
Yep.
Again, I, everything just seems like a lot of money, but how many buildings are we doing at least? Was it Town Hall is one of them, right?
Yeah, hold on, I have a list.
Yeah, I just had it for capital. Town Hall, WPA, DPW, Water, Sewer, any-
Harbor Master's Building.
Harbor Master. We already did the community center, right? The community center is on here?
Did you have Harvard Community Center?
Yeah, that was the first, first one.
It's being done, but it's not being done as part of the-
That's the first phase. So, some of these buildings have no security at all. There's some wire, it's more than we've talked about in public. You had the presentation from Deputy Chief Thompson in the spring, so this is just a continuation. Again, we don't discuss security in open session. If you'd like to have more discussion, we can put in an executive session, but Nancy has the list of buildings.
Yeah, Harbor Master's Building, Sewer, Waste Water Treatment Plant, Water Waste Water Treatment Plant, excuse me, Water Health, the ANX over there, the old Station Three, Town Hall, WPA, DPW Garage, Fire Station One, Recreation Department, the additional ones for the library, and then Fire Station Four, which those may be incorporated as whatever happens with the residential project. They would all be from free cash, except Recreation can support theirs from their revolving fund, Water and Sewer and Waterways can support theirs from their enterprise retained earnings.
So, how much free cash?
Hold on, let me look the other way.
Did I skip over the IT?
One ninety-three, six forty-five.
Did I skip over number two, or did I, did we talk about that? The one ninety-two?
You said it was a lot of money.
Oh, I say that a lot.
A quick question on the security. I presume we've got, so we're doing the rec department, but I presume that in the bid contracts for the new buildings, we'll put in the appropriate security requirements?
Yep.
Which, may I?
Yep.
Why would we be adding security to the library which was just built?
It's not a whole lot. There's just some additional stuff based upon the walkthrough and what's there.
Time's changed. Well, it seems like yesterday is all I can say.
Is there money in the library to do that, or no?
Potentially, you could release money in the library to do that.
Hmm, you probably should.
That was one of the discussions we had, but it was also, the other discussion was the generator.
Which needs to be done.
I think we need both. Probably have to have that discussion again.
Yeah, and you may not have enough money for the both.
To do both.
In the library reserve.
Any questions on, the next one's a facility study master plan for town buildings. Two hundred and eight thousand dollars to look at the buildings we're not already looking at on Plan One, and the result is they're going to tell us the status of the buildings and what maintenance we need to. So, it's the Habib Report, two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, with the twenty-year capital plan attached to it.
It's twenty-five buildings.
Is it going to include a prioritization plan? You know, because I think we get caught in identifying everything that we need to do, but then we kind of-
Don't have the money to do it?
Well, yeah, it's one thing to identify, it's to be able to afford to do it. That's part of the problem, but-
So, in the RFP, there are four priorities. Priority one is a current critical condition in this category requires immediate action to correct a cited safety hazard, stop accelerated deterioration. Priority two, potentially critical, intermittent operations, rapid deterioration. Priority three, necessary but not yet critical, and priority four is that it's recommended. So, I'm pretty sure that we're probably going to be Priority One through three in most of everything.
Thank you.
As Moore just mentioned, we do these studies. We find out we need twelve million dollars worth of repair done to these twenty-five buildings, and you can't do it.
At least we'll have a working document that we can incorporate into our capital plan, whether or not we act on it is another thing.
Well, I think we have to act on it, you know, just like we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for a coastal study. You know, we have to continue to act on that, too, instead of having them sit on shelves. Not that they are, but just, I mean, we're plugging away, but-
And it is twenty-five buildings.
Yeah.
Water Meter, I think we got a pretty good answer on that one before, and the design for, I mean, that's really just our continued water maintenance program of doing a couple million dollars a year of replacement pipes. Any questions on either of those two?
No.
All right. Moving on to number four, acceptance of a loan from FEMA.
We have, Mr. Chairman, we've not yet been notified on the outcome of our application to this seawall and dam repair fund, so this may be a moot article and be tabled if we do not hear or if we're not successful in our application.
So, this isn't a FEMA grant where we pay twenty-five percent? This is actually a loan?
This would potentially be a loan or a grant from the seawall and dam repair fund for our twenty-five percent of a twelve million dollar project.
For our twelve percent of the twenty-five million dollar?
No, our twenty-five percent of the twelve million dollar project. I know you were trying to screw me up.
Sounds better that way. Three million.
And this bond would be paid through the budget?
Yeah, general fund. And we looked at this when we looked at the long-term debt of how we would try to fit this in. It could be moved, and it's also in fiscal twenty-one, the twenty-five capital plan if it doesn't come to fruition this way.
Okay.
Usually they'll let us know by now. I checked today, they have not announced the grant recipients yet, so.
Well, I hope it's a grant.
Maybe both.
Next article is CPC. There's two projects. Mr. Yee came in and spoke about the canopy, which is a larger one for eighty-five thousand dollars. Who spoke about?
Dan.
Dan.
Dan Fenley.
Dan Fenley came in and spoke about the mile markers. Any questions on those?
No.
All right, zoning, number seven. Allowed temporary sign, oh, this is the sign.
Free speech, it's the free speech motion. Do we have the language? I couldn't find it.
It's in the, should be in this.
It's not.
It's on the website, under the planning board, they have the language for all of their proposed bylaws, the three of them.
Actually, the Green Bush one, but not the sign one. Can anyone just quickly explain what we're proposing?
Yeah, in a nutshell, it takes, right now, political signs are a separate category. It's basically taking political signs out of a separate category and categorizing them with other temporary signs.
So, a political sign can be out there for how long?
No, it's still limited, Sean. I'd have to go back and look, but it's, you call them out as a separate category under your bylaw. That's infringement on speech.
So, we have, we have a rule that you can't, if you're a roofer, you can't leave a sign up for more than X, Y, Z amount of time? Are there, are we going around looking at that?
This is a quick fix to try to have something in place for the election. The sign regulations get woven and dug into the whole zoning bylaw, and it was just getting way too complicated to try to pull all those threads, so we wanted to have something ready for the spring so people would understand what the rules were, and then we're going to come back with a whole new rewrite of that entire section.
So, is it basically putting stricter parameters on political signs?
No, it's less strict parameters.
So, you can have it up for as long as you want?
Not as long as you want, but you can definitely put them up sooner and leave them up longer.
Well, now that we've changed the election date, they can stay up even longer.
Yeah, and again, we identified a hiccup in our bylaw before where if you were running in the primary, you could put your signs up thirty days before the primary and then leave them up, but if you were an independent candidate, you weren't on a primary ballot, so theoretically you couldn't put your signs up until thirty days before the general election. That was a problem, we had to fix that, and then the thirty-day prior has been ruled in other cases to be too restrictive. The three days after, I think you can still suffice it, but you can't call them political signs anymore, they're going to be temporary signs under that definition.
And the red line version is on the website, but with the planning board's zoning changes, the three of them are. I'm just looking at it now.
Okay, so we can take a look at that. Number seven is English Driftway. So, amending, says the, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the Hummer Rock one, that's next, right? That's eight, so it's just in the wrong order. So, the Driftway one is in the detail here, amending, I think this was more of a cleanup.
It's more of a cleanup, technical changes, so.
It's a hundred pages of documents to look at.
Yeah, so there's, it goes all the way to N, N of adding this word, taking this word out, but I don't think it was substantial.
The only thing that's stuck in my head is that they will allow boat storage. You used to be able to do boat storage down there when they did the new bylaw, they inadvertently took that out, they're putting that back in. People can still store boats down there, but for the most part, it's just changed B to C and stuff like that.
I think I saw one that I wanted to.
Any questions on that one? No. The next one is to extend the Hummer Rock Village Residential Overlay District. We talked about that with Attorney Roderick the other night, and that's that little section over the bridge on the left that they want to just include in the overlay district. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. We're not voting this yet, but we want a second. And then number nine is the amendments to the Council on Aging, which Linda went over with us in terms of their guidelines. Any questions on that one? Number ten is the plastic bag bylaw.
Wait a minute, I had a question. Let's see what it was.
So, is this just changing that one word, that one paragraph there?
Yep.
You had a question.
Which one?
On this one, I was just, you know, why are we taking out those different definitions?
It wasn't in the, sorry, may I? It wasn't in the original proposed bylaw that was brought forward by the group that was interested in it. We borrowed the coacid bylaw, and they had that language in it, so this is not what they originally proposed, so they wanted this language out when we were taking it to town meeting, but it was very confusing at that time to try to amend it on the floor, so it was thought better to come back and just remove the language.
Just fix it.
And I did look it up online, and it's to do with the biodegradability of the actual bag.
Shouldn't they be in here telling us about it?
Why is it the Council of Aging sponsoring it?
It's not the Council.
It's not, yeah.
That's for the one above.
Oh, it's below, oh, okay.
Yeah, the sponsorship. I know, it's at the bottom, yeah.
You are.
I didn't see it before either.
It didn't strike us as really a big change that needed a whole presentation before the board.
May I?
Yeah.
I think, I think the problem is, is that there's been so much talk lately about plastics in the marine environment that you would think that the reason why this language is in there is to make these compostable plastic bags as non-detrimental to the marine environment as possible. So, I'm not, was it the article sponsors who came to us and said this is too restrictive? I don't understand.
They're the ones who want to make the change to begin with there, but it still, it still has to conform to standards for biodegradability and compostability, it just takes out one of the definitions.
But I-
ASTMD seven oh eight one.
You mean this, this information that we're striking is not accurate?
Well, that's very important because I think that's what will get people going at town meeting. Well, then.
Well, we'll just make sure we address that.
We know that, yeah. Thank you.
Is this, who is the sponsor of this, Lauren? Is this Lisa Scanlon and?
Well, I think Michelle actually revised it to exactly Nancy's point. That's not what was in the original language. It was, you know, we adopted coacids without confirming the information, I'll say, and the information was outdated and incorrect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Number eleven is the property tax exemption for Gold Star parents. I know we got, I don't know that we discussed this, I know we got something in writing on it that was proposed, I think it's the complete elimination of property taxes for Gold Star parents. I think there were different levels that you could do, but I think the one they're proposing is the-
Full exemption, yep.
Full exemption.
The full, right?
Yeah. The town only has one, as far as I know, two? And I think that was in the write-up that we got. Anyone have any questions on that? Then we have, the last three are the ones that we discussed at the last meeting, the water moratorium, and then the number thirteen is a water moratorium petition. So, if there's any reason why twelve is wrong, then they are going to petition the state to put a water moratorium in, and then the last one is petition to elect water commissioners. Any questions on any of those? Okay, so, let's vote them. Is everyone ready to vote them? I'm going to go out on a limb and bunch of, put a bunch of them together. So, does anyone have any problems with one, two, three, four? Oh, we do, forget it. All of those in favor of, what's the right words? Just not accepting, but in fa-
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote for the warrant articles one, two, three, and four for November fifth, two thousand and nineteen, special town meeting contingent upon any further changes by town council and/or the town administrator.
Second.
Second, Ms. Connolly. All in favor?
Aye.
If those are unanimous. What was the word you said? What's the motion again? Paul?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote for the warrant articles-
Vote for the wa, so aren't we voting in favor or not in favor?
I would say it's in favor.
Vote in favor of.
Sorry.
Okay, okay.
No, no, that's not the vote.
You're right.
Okay.
Would you like me to re-motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, why don't we do these individually for, or do five individually?
Do you want, so you don't want the first vote amended?
No.
Okay.
I got it.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote-
To approve.
To approve, thank you. To approve the warrant article number five, Community Preservation Act for November fifth, two thousand and nineteen, special town meeting contingent upon any further changes by town council and/or town administrator.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Six, seven, why don't we do them individually, I guess? Does anyone have any?
Hold.
Holds, that's a very good, on six through eleven, let's say. No.
No, no.
Okay, then why don't we do all those together?
Six through eleven, okay. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve warrant articles six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, and eleven for November fifth, two thousand and nineteen, special town meeting contingent upon any further changes by town council and/or the town administrator.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, then we have twelve, thirteen, and fourteen left. Why don't we do?
Individually.
You want to do them individually?
Twelve and thirteen together.
Well, people may.
Oh, true.
Let's, sure.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Chair?
Please. Please.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to not, how do we, not approve.
Not in favor.
Not in favor. Vote to the Board of Selectmen vote not in favor of warrant article number 12, petition article for water moratorium for the November 5, 2019, special town meeting contingent upon any further changes by Town Council and/or the Town Administrator.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in, all in favor of not being in favor? Vote.
Aye.
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 That's unanimous.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote not to approve the warrant article number 13, petition the legislature impose a water moratorium for the November 5, 2019, special town meeting contingent upon any further changes by Town Council and/or Administrator.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of not being in favor?
Aye.
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 And the last one?
Can I, may I have discussion?
Discuss.
When they use legislature as capital L, are they referring to the state legislature?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
For 13?
On 14.
On 14.
Aren't we talking about 14?
Oh, yeah.
Or both.
Yeah. I knew 13 did, but I was unclear that 14 was doing that as well. Okay.
Do you have to petition the state to get water commissioners?
Elected.
Well, again, the question is, what are they amending? It's not clear what they're amending. If they're amending the bylaw, no. But I don't think they can amend the bylaw and set up a separate elected water commissioner. So they'd have to petition the state legislature to amend the town charter. But again, it's not clear what they're amending. So, but the town charter would have to be changed to set up a separate elected board aside from the boards that are currently listed in the charter. So this would have to be a charter change.
And you think it could be enforceable if they changed this, the bylaw, or if they, if they had done it a different way? You could do it through a bylaw change?
No.
No, it has to be through the charter.
Has to be a charter change.
Okay.
You can't establish elected officials through a bylaw change. It has to go through a charter change.
And that's not what this is asking to do?
I don't know what this is asking to do. It doesn't specify what it's asking to do. It just says to petition the legislature to vote this. It doesn't say to petition the legislature to amend the Town of Situate Charter by inserting the following section, sections, it just says.
It says revisions as necessary to achieve the intention of this article to transfer the current authority from the Board of Selectmen regarding water supply to a new water commission.
Right. But revisions to what?
Well, to the charter, right?
Well, his point is that it's not called out.
It should specify that.
The legislature would be unlikely to be able to do anything with this particular.
That's a legal question, but it should have specified to petition the legislature for special legislation to amend the Town of Situate Charter in similar forms with the blah, 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 blah.
And how often does that happen?
Charter changes like that?
Yeah.
For a particular town or in general?
Just any particular town.
It depends. I mean, you see them a lot more often now. A lot of towns are doing, for lack of a better term, quick charter changes in terms of gender identity for a board.
But that's semantics. That's not fundamental.
But it is the same, it is the same process that you have to follow to amend the charter.
But a much bigger outcome.
I don't think you see, and again, I'll just go by my experience, I can't remember just someone coming forward with, here's a charter change. A community would more likely do what we're proposing to look at the charter and then make a recommendation to make changes to the charter as opposed to, here's this one little change that, that we want to make right here. I haven't seen, I haven't been everywhere, but I haven't seen charter changes by petition article in the 20-something years I've been doing this.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No, I mean, it's, it's an interesting conversation. I'm not so sure that as written or as, as we discussed when they, when he presented, it's functionally in the best interest of the town. I think it's interesting conversation, but to Jim's point, I think that's part of the conversation that our charter commission could have and try to ferret it out, is it in the best interest of the town? I don't think those questions have been answered yet. But they're worth asking. So personally, I, I don't, I don't think it's ready for prime time.
It could be down the road.
It could be down the road, yeah. I mean, it may be something that we all think is a great idea, but we're not, it's not ready yet. My thoughts.
Well, and I'm just, I think it's not the right group to take, to achieve what they want to achieve, so.
Yeah, and I agree. It's something that could be discussed and in the future it could be, but it should be in the context of what we're trying to do in general. And he's, I mean, the proponent has admitted at other meetings that he's just doing it to raise attention to a problem as opposed to be informed about what is going to happen. And he didn't even know what was going on. So that's, so anyways, I think it should be up for discussion, but I think this is kind of a knee-jerk reaction to, hey, I'm unhappy with the current situation, let's make a dramatic change.
Would you like a motion, sir?
Yeah, unless you have anything to say, or?
No, I mean, you guys have covered most of it. I mean, from my point of view, there's, there's some structural issues. You know, right now, it's Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, DPW, Water. I'm not sure how this structure is going to work because the water commissioners are over here. I report to the water commissioners on a policy basis. Is the Water Department still under the DPW? Are they split off from the DPW? If they're split off from the DPW, what does that mean in terms of sharing resources that we do now? Are they still under the DPW Director? Is he not involved anymore? How do I serve two policy boards? And there's also, in the end, when you have two separate boards, you end up with accountability issues where people say, well, we asked, they said no. They asked, we said no. It's a much cleaner, lighter responsibility. Ultimately, it's Sean Anderson's fault, it's Kevin's fault, it's my fault, then it's your fault. But now you'd be branching off as to where those lines of responsibilities go. It's just not as clean and as defined if you wanted to do it. There should be more, again, in my opinion, there should be more there, there as to how this is going to be set up.
Okay. Yeah, I would like a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote not to approve warrant article 14 to petition the legislature for a separate water commission for the November 5, 2019, special town meeting contingent upon any further changes by Town Council and/or the Town Administrator.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great.
Do we want to assign them? Sorry.
I think we're just going to have Sean do them all.
Yeah, Sean.
So we do have a, we do have a proposed consent agenda with five articles out of the 14. You still need to assign people in case they get called up, but we would put 1, 4, 9, 10, and 11 on the consent. 1, 4. 9, 10, and 11.
It's such a short meeting, why were we?
Well, I also, oh, sorry, you go first.
With the short agenda, I don't know how, short, why, I don't know how short the meeting is going to be, given some of the subject permits on there.
I think the, I think the Gold Star parent, people may want to discuss that. Not in opposition, but I think people will want to discuss it. I don't.
We've, we've put all the other tax relief proposals that we've had on consent agendas and.
True.
There's only been, moved on, what, about six of them, roughly? And there's only been one question.
Well, I was going to say.
Yeah, someone wants, they can hold it, we pull it out.
I'll just say, hold. Okay.
I don't anticipate any way of speaking against it or.
I'll be quiet.
Or being in opposition to it.
I think, I'm guessing Mara's point is, it's an opportunity to acknowledge our veterans and their parents. I don't know. It wouldn't have to take a lot of time, but it is an opportunity.
The consent ones are going to take 5% of the meeting.
Okay.
But, which is why I think we should say them. But, hold them if you want to.
Well, I mean, Sean's right, too. If somebody wants to, they can.
Speak.
Okay. So Sean, you want 1, 4, 9, 10, and 11? Because I'll be going just, hold, hold. All right, so.
Sure.
Do I, are there any that I'm supposed to do? Am I?
Yeah.
All right, so.
You know, should do capital.
So I'll do 1, 2, and 3?
What was that, Tony?
I'll do 1, 2, and 3. Who wants to do 4?
We're not doing 4, it's consent.
Well, you have to be.
You still have to assign someone just in case.
Oh, oh, I'll do 4. I'll do 4 and 5.
Sean, you're holding on to the end, brother?
I'm not saying anything.
Mara's got 4.
Let me do 5.
Who wants to do CPC? Do you, Karen, you want to do CPC?
Karen, you want to do it?
Karen will do that.
What's your middle initial, by the way? E, okay, good.
Who wants to do the zoning ones?
K2.
Or about 6 and 7? And 8? Or who wants to do 6?
It doesn't matter. I'll do whatever anyone who doesn't want, doesn't matter.
I'll do 6.
Just, I mean.
Who said that? So Karen, you do 6. Who wants to do Green Bush? Sean, you do 7. I'll just tell you that's what you're doing. Who wants to do 8?
Doesn't matter, I'm staying, if I'm up there, I can stay here, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, Sean, you do 8?
7.
9, 10, and 11?
Spelling your name wrong.
I am, let's see. I can do, I'll do 9. And should I do 10 then, too?
Why don't you do them all, just because they're probably not.
11, yeah, yeah, okay.
And then 12, 13, and 14. I think whoever does 12 should do 13.
Yeah.
Do you want to do those?
I'm happy to do those, yeah. Mr. Chair, there's, I just want to, well, let's finish this and then I want to ask you a question.
Okay. I will, I don't have a problem doing 14 unless, you want to do 14?
I can do 14, so if I don't do 14, I'll probably do nothing. I'll be sitting there all night.
Well, you're doing 4.
Yes, which is a consent. Well, it's consent, or, you know.
But you've got to be on the ready.
So you do 14.
Well, that could bring to my question.
Okay.
More. So as it stands, I am, I have a flight that gets in that afternoon specifically to make it back for that, but I want to have a backup plan in case, you know, I'm having a really good time or it's torn.
Someone's going to get them hurt.
I changed the flight when we picked the date, but I just, I just got nervous that maybe we should have somebody on deck in case my flight is. I mean, I'm later in the agenda, so that's good, but if somebody wants to sort of, I can give mine, I'll, I'll do all the notes and, but I really think it might be prudent to have a backup just in case.
How about because there's so few, we don't give you any, just in case? And then if you, you can prepare for like 12 and 13, and if you're there, you can do them, I guess? I don't know, because.
Instead of the opposite, yeah.
Instead of the opposite?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm just saying, because.
Now my plane will totally be on time.
Well, then you do them.
You can do them.
Wait, no, he just said to flip it, that it gave me nothing and I'll just be backup.
Happy with that.
Whatever you want to do, Mr. Chair.
I don't, who, who wants to be Karen's?
I can.
Backup for 12 and 13?
I can get beaten up for.
Well, you shouldn't do 12, 13, and 14.
45 minutes.
Oh, right, the others are consent, right.
Why don't we take one, Tony? It doesn't matter. 12 and 13 doesn't matter.
Well, they're the same.
12, I mean, 12 and 13 are the same.
Same, yeah.
But it's going to be two debates.
Same, same conversation. I mean, I would imagine that our comments, we would combine them, not talk them separately.
Yeah, I don't know why you'd have two separate debates on them. Two separate topics, but it's the exact same issue.
Yeah.
Karen, you have two, right? Why don't I? I'll do, I'll do the backup for 12 and 13.
Okay, and I won't be late.
And I'll do, why don't I do the backup for?
9, 10.
K1's 9, 10, and 11.
Thank you, guys.
Why don't you take one from here?
Can I just review what I have?
Yes.
Okay, Article 1, 2, and 3, Tony Biniani. Article 4, Marah Conroy. Article 5 and 6, Karen Conroy. Article 7, Sean Harris. 9, 10, 11, who'd be Karen Cantfield with the backup of Marah Conroy. And Karen Cantfield will have 12 and 13 with a backup of Tony Biniani. And Marah Conroy will have Article 14.
Very good. That's what I have.
Okay.
That was good.
Lauren?
We'll have the warrant to sign, free to sign tonight, it will be posted tomorrow.
Do we need to make a special motion? No, because we already did that. We did it.
All right. The next item of discussion vote, so designation of Town Administrator and DPW Director for authority to act on behalf of the Town of Situate regarding the Clean Water Trust for DWSRF-4588-Well 17A Water Treatment Plant, James Bedrow, Town Administrator.
So basically, there is a giant stack of paperwork that need to be, needs to be signed in conjunction, yeah, I'm having one of those nights, in connection with this water pollution abatement trust fund monies, you're just authorizing myself or Kevin, if I'm not around, to execute the paperwork. Otherwise, it's just a nightmare.
Who would do it if we didn't do this?
You guys would have to do it.
So the chair or the board would have to do it?
The chair or the board, depending on what the paperwork said, but you would, probably we wanted to designate the chair to do this, in which case, Tony, we've been here signing paperwork ad nauseam.
Karen, you have the, if you decide to do the next. We vote and then I would have to read?
Well, your vote, your read is the vote.
Okay.
Execute agreements?
Oh, I see.
Is that, has that already been done? That would come to us, though, right?
You still borrow the money. You still have to do the loan.
There's two separate ones, right, Lauren?
You only have three, one, and Tony signs the other.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see, okay.
Okay, so I guess the meat of it is under number 1. We're just authorizing Jim and Kevin to file the application, execute agreements for the grant, as well as furnish information, data, documents pertaining to the application of the grant. Anyone have any questions here?
So the financial oversight of the actual grant receipt and dispensing, or spending, goes through our Director of Finance?
So on a Clean Water Trust loan, we haven't done one in a long time. They don't, we don't borrow the money. As we pay bills, we'll prepare a reimbursement request, which the town will sign off on, which Jim or Kevin would sign off on, which would then go to the DEP who signed off on it, then would go to Clean Water Trust, who then sends us money. So it's like a giant drawdown, that you could add 20-plus drawdowns over the course of projects. Thank you for your service.
Everything comes from Nancy. I try to have it so we're going into my back account, and then I would disburse the funds, but they said no.
Your PayPal account, no?
Trust me.
This is only regarding well 17A water treatment.
Right.
Okay, are we, can I have a mo, motion?
Motion, uh...
Well, Karen will read it.
Oh, don't I, don't we vote to authorize, and then she reads it?
Karen has to read this first, and then we...
And then we vote to authorize.
Does anyone have a problem with it? Everyone fine with this? Okay.
No, now that it's been explained, no.
Whereas the town of Situate, after thorough investigation, has determined that the work activity consisting of DWSRF-4588-Well 17A Water Treatment Plant is both in the public interest and necessary to protect the public health, and that to undertake this activity, it is necessary to apply for assistance. And whereas the Mass Department of Environmental Protection and the Mass Massachusetts Clean Water Trust of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts pursuant to Chapter 21 and Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws of the Commonwealth are authorized to make loans to the municipalities for the purpose of funding, planning, and construction activities relative to drinking water protection projects. And whereas the applicant has examined the provisions of the Act, Chapter 1 and Chapter 29(c), and believes to be in the public interest to file a loan application, now therefore be it resolved by the town of Situate as follows. One, the town of Situate Town Administrator, James Bedrow, and DPW Director, Kevin Cafferty, are hereby authorized on behalf of the applicant to file applications and execute agreements for grant and/or loan assistance, as well as furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to the application for grants and/or loans, as may be required, and otherwise to act as the authorized representative of the applicant in connection with this application. Two, that the purpose of said loans, if awarded, shall be to fund construction activities. Three, that if said award is made, the applicant agrees to pay these costs, which constitute the required applicant share of the project costs.
Well done. Can I have a motion?
Motion to vote to authorize the town administrator and DPW director as authorized officials for filing paperwork with the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust relevant to the DWSRF-4588-Well 17A Water Treatment Plant, otherwise known as the Green Sand Filter Facility.
Second, anybody?
It's under the action sign. No.
Well done.
Sounded good. I mean, yes, yes, I did. Excuse me.
I listened to everything Karen said. Second by, second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
Lauren, you're too efficient.
Eight minutes ahead of schedule, we move on to old business, which is the discussion vote of the DPW rates for water sewer and transfer station. Nancy has been, um, so kind in producing all this information for us. And...
And you brought backup.
And we have the PowerPoint in here, and then afterwards, you went and sent us more information on the proposed expense and, and other options, which there weren't a heck of a lot, but it's not a heck of a lot. So why don't we start with sewer? Then Will can go home. Because I think, I think it's the easiest, too.
Yeah. Okay, so that would be page seven, or the seventh slide down in your presentation. You asked us to go back and take a look at where we could potentially make reductions in expenses and other options for revenue. So looking at an expense reduction analysis, right now, there's eight full-time personnel at the sewer department. They just became fully funded, fully have a full complement after several years of having people acting in other capacities while we were looking for a sewer supervisor. So as of August 2019, they have their full eight. So right now, there are no vacancies that could remain unfilled. So if you wanted to make a reduction in personnel, it would require laying someone off. Materials and supplies, which would include equipment parts, cleaning supplies, and other contractual uniform allowances, fuel, and chemicals and supplies. There is a future opportunity for savings in this, in the chemicals and supplies line item when INI is reduced, because we'll be treating less effluent. So there is something that can be done in that line item. We just can't do it right now, until the INI, it comes down. And reductions in equipment parts is also something that the board can do. It would hamper the ability of the department to perform maintenance and make repairs for the UV system and other systems in the plant, which has been a problem in the past with deferred maintenance. So we don't want to preach to the choir on that one. Other things we could look at, a purchase of services, which includes electricity, required monitoring, repair, maintenance, training, and sledgecape disposal. Again, we have a future opportunity cost for a reduction in sledgecape disposal with a capital project to reduce the water content, which would reduce the overall tonnage. That is not something that has currently been done, that particular capital project, so that we would have to have funding put into the capital plan in order to do it. But it is a possibility for future reduction in costs, regular operating costs. Electricity is a significant operating cost. The sewer department has benefited from the ESCO project and the Green Communities Grants, and had several of their pumps and other systems replaced with more energy-efficient systems. But that, it's still an ongoing upward battle with the electricity costs. And again, as with the equipment parts, any reduction in the repair and maintenance line item would hamper the ability of the department to make repairs and keep up with the maintenance for the systems in the plant, as well as the pump stations. So it is not a recommended item that we put before the board, but it is well within the board to do so and reduce that item. So revenue options, we've talked about the increasing spaghetti line or subdivision connections, utilizing the capacity created. And we looked at refusing out-of-town septic at our last discussion, as Will reported back to the board. An elimination of the out-of-town septic was not recommended by him, as the composition of that waste is needed for the treatment of the overall effluent stream because of the type of infiltration of saltwater that we have. Sorry, I am talking really fast.
Nope.
I'll try to calm it down.
Pretty concise, though.
And it was caffeine-free, I was drinking. Obviously, it's not having a good effect. So the, because of the high contents of saltwater, we need that change in our composite. And the other issue is the town is currently at the upper limit of its capacity, which again, hampers the ability of the sewer commissioners, the board, to bring on additional connections. We've spoke about the reliance on one-time revenues, has been a past practice, but it is only delaying the inevitable of a rate correction. The longer it goes on, the greater that disparity becomes between our recurring revenues, as well as our operating expenses. So we talked about the betterments, and how the, when a betterment is put in place, it is meant to pay off the, the debt that it was incurred for creating that betterment to the properties. So this is an example of, not an example, this is our betterment-to-debt-service summary. So as you can see, in fiscal year 2020, the betterment, uh, revenue remaining to be added to the taxes is approximately $355,000 less than the associated debt service for those improvements. And that's because when someone refinances their property, oftentimes, the mortgage company will require that they pay off the betterment. And usually, when there's a sale, most new owners do not want to assume a betterment. They want it taken care of at the time of a sale. So you will see prepayments, and that's been one of the one-time revenues that the sewer enterprise has been relying on. So we're upside down on our debt to betterment re, revenue through 2025. Then we have a couple of years where it goes the other way, and then we go back into being negative. So these are just operating costs that we're going to have to absorb, that we have no revenue anymore that's married to it.
Can I jump in, Nancy? In 2028, is that assuming that we're going to get more connections, and then we go back to?
No, this is just what's out there.
Just the existing debt.
This is just existing betterments and existing debt for those improved areas. This doesn't include...
I thought you said, you know, like, right now, 2020, where people have paid in advance $355,000, is that correct? In advance to their betterments.
Yes.
But that money was used, so...
Right. But in an ideal situation, you put it in the following buckets every year out, and just take it each year.
You could.
That's what we do now, right?
No. Right now, when you, a prepaid betterment comes in, it's, it goes right to revenue and closes out to wastewater.
Probably recently changed that.
Now, we created a sewer enterprise stabilization, capital stabilization fund, which allows us to capture it, and we did capture about $250,000 in one town meeting vote. We haven't captured any further, because we've needed it for the operating costs.
So can you explain the graph to, it's when you get to 2026? So that continues to happen, 355, 374, 393, and so on goes up. And then all of a sudden, it drops. Why does it drop in 2026?
Because you have betterments that mature out, and you also have debt service that matures out.
All right, okay, thank you.
Right, so overall, this is all the betterments, right? This is all the projects end in 2033. And we've prepaid and used $2.4 million of that money for the last, whatever, 10 years.
So this, right now, our revenue from prepaid betterments was like 800,000, then the following year, 400,000, then to 200,000, where they've been being paid off, especially when the rates were low and there was a lot of refinancing going on. There aren't a lot of them still that are going to get prepaid as there were in the past.
Until we do a new one.
Correct.
And then a lot of people pay it all upfront.
Right, and if, if you do a new one, and it's related to North Situate and that sewer district, it probably wouldn't be town funds, it would be the district that would get the, the betterment funds.
Well, I think we have to change the policy moving forward, that we don't use the funds in the period that it's not associated with.
I have absolutely no problem with the board adopting a policy such as that, as long as the board is mindful that they can no longer then use that revenue to support the operating budget. But I think that would be a wonderful policy to adopt going forward on all the...
On future projects, is what I'm saying.
Yep.
Just stealing from Peter to pay Paul at this rate, and it's not sustainable, obviously.
And, and prior to that, just so anyone watching at home at this late hour, or later on, revamps, while eating their Captain Crunch, this was not something that the board had the ability to do in the past. The Department of Revenue did not allow enterprise funds to set aside money or earmark money. So it was only after they created multiple stabilization funds that you were able to do this. So this was not something that the board, you know, didn't do. It was something the board couldn't do. But now we can do it.
And you, I know you provided the data, but I don't have it in front of me. There's, the stabilization fund is basically, how much, is there any left in there? It's like a very small amount, right?
It's a small amount, and we were, I believe, some of it is in the town administrator's recommended capital plan. We used some of it last year in the recommended capital plan as well. Right now, we have, I think it's six stabilization funds. We have the regular stabilization fund, capital stabilization fund, sewer water, transfer station, golf. All have capital stabilization funds with money in it. There's an economic development stabilization fund with money in it. And we adopted a waterwise, waterways enterprise stabilization fund, but we have not yet funded anything into it. So the only, there's only one enterprise fund that doesn't have a capital stabilization fund.
And the, but the current balance of the sewer enterprise stabilization fund is nominal.
I think it's about 75, was it? Yeah, I think it's less than 100.
Yeah, I thought 75 was the number I remember.
I have it somewhere, but it's not, it's not worth looking at.
Yeah.
So in, based on our recommendation to you at the last meeting, we discussed, met and discussed again, we still recommend that the board consider addressing the fiscal '20 structural deficit of $253,001, which is the amount of retained earnings that was used to balance the fiscal '20 budget as it was voted, and then an additional $82,000 that is recommended in the special town meeting to meet the fiscal '19 level of operating costs, and to do that by eliminating the 625 cubic feet of free usage that is now included in the base rate. And I do have...
So that's the only change you're asking for?
That's what we're recommending. And I did reach out to Mike Schrader at Time Bond. They normally, they used to do statewide rate comparisons, and they haven't done it for many years. And he did get back to me as to how many, in the 2017 study they just concluded, actually have free usage, and it's only 35 out of 182 respondents to their survey in 2007, 17. So 19.2% of the communities or districts' survey provided free usage of any type.
So is this enough to level off the income statement for this year?
It, it levels it off going forward.
For 2020?
Yes. So you would, you would expect that going forward in 2021, you would be looking at, during a rate discussion, of just meeting whatever your contractual increases were, or if you brought on any type of a debt that wasn't taking the place of retiring debt.
But my question is, in '20, you're not going to get the full, the full benefit of the change?
No, but we will get sufficient funds to support the budget, because you're going to get three-quarters worth.
You're going to get three-quarters?
You've already funded, you're not supplanting the $253,000 that was already voted by annual town meeting. We only need to have, provide $82,000 additional...
Oh, oh, so we're not, we don't have to get the, the 253 came from retained earnings?
If we were to put this in place, we would get three-quarters of it. So we would exceed the 82,000. But then we would be in good stead going forward.
Did the 253 come from retained earnings?
It did.
So that technically would go back to retained earnings if we...
Whatever excess revenue that you have would close out to retained earnings at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Just so I understand this correctly, so if you're such a small user, less than 625, you're going to pay for every drop. Before, you got 625 cubic feet for free, 624.
For your base rate.
Okay. Base rate.
Yeah.
If you don't use any water, do you get a bill?
Well, I...
I believe so. We don't, we don't handle billing at the sewer department, but I believe you would still reassess the base rate, would be my assumption?
Yeah, I'm thinking if you're in a well.
The base, it's not a rate, it's a fee, right?
Yeah, you have the base rate, which is a quarterly fee, and then you have the usage, same in water.
So you get the base, but no usage?
Yeah, so if you're in a well, but you're in the sewer district, you're probably just paying base, because you don't have a usage that they're, that they're qualifying.
Well, that's a hole, right? Hole in the system, if they had a well, but they're processing all their sewage, but it's based on water usage?
I don't, I don't know of any of the well, most of the wells are in the West End that don't have sewage.
And they wouldn't have sewer.
They wouldn't have sewage. I don't know of any properties that do have a well and sewage, unless it's an irrigation well.
No, it's not going into the sewer anyway, so.
Right.
Any other questions?
And then we provided you with a comparison of the sewer, the surrounding sewer bills. The elimination of the free usage, we were number three, we would stay at number three. There's a big gap between four and five, I mean, two and four.
Any questions on, or any debate on whether we should raise rates, or just get rid of that free usage? No?
Some analysis, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to eliminate the 625 CF of free usage currently afforded to sewer users effective for the second quarter of fiscal 2020 billing cycle.
Second.
Second, Ms. Conley, just, so, and I'm, I'm not opposed to doing this, but what this is doing, as Shaun mentioned, a second ago, this is taking the fee and putting it down to the lower users, as opposed to a rate increase that would put it up to the higher users.
And sewer has a single, there isn't based on... Thank you, that was the word I was looking for. It's a single tier.
Still, same thing, you, you would...
Yeah. Understood.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, five to zero to eliminate the base, or the free sewage. All right, why don't we go to water?
Okay. So that would be, starting with slide 17 in your packets. Again, we looked at the expense reductions. Currently, water has 16 full-time personnel. Staff member was added in fiscal '19. I didn't think there was any appetite with the board for a reduction of water staff at this time, based on the focus on water and the issues that surround it. So we looked at materials and supplies, again, equipment parts, cleaning supplies, fuel, chemical, and lab supplies. So this includes all their labs. Reductions in equipment parts would hamper the ability of the department, again, to perform maintenance and make repairs. So we didn't think this was something that was recommended to the board to make any changes in that. Purchase of services, including electricity, record learning, monitoring, repair and maintenance training, and Town of Marshfield water. So there have been some improvements in the Town of Marshfield water situation. We haven't gotten our first bill to see if it lasted beyond the second half billing last year. If it does, we may have, may not need to increase that line. The Town of Marshfield did raise its rates by 5%. And in an interesting turn of events, they raised their base rate, not their usage rate. So the fact that we have a reduction in usage doesn't help us. The base rate went up. So we'll have to see how that plays out when we get our first bill. Again, the reductions in the repair and maintenance line, we're not recommending. We just came at the last special town meeting in November for emergency repairs to the water treatment plant. They need their repair and maintenance lines to deal with their ongoing issues at the pump stations, as well as at the plant. We took, I wanted to provide you with the, the debt for the water enterprise. As you can see, we don't have a lot of retiring debt. The blue line is the long-term debt that's issued, so that's fairly stagnant. The red is the phase three of the 22 million, which has not yet been issued. There's about $6.8 million outstanding, that's just in a ban. The green is the emergency plant repairs, which we have not yet financed. Again, it's just in a ban. So those are going to bump that number back up, and that's why you did increase the rates by 20% last year and increased the connection fees to accommodate those. Now, we have an additional $3 million for items that are before the special town meeting, which are not part of this rate discussion, that will come up next year. So the debt, debt service impact that we brought before you to be considered for this rate discussion was the $4 million design engineering of water treatment plant upgrade... discussion was the $4 million design engineering of water treatment plant upgrades and SCADA upgrades to the pump stations. The $2 million, so, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. I wanted to provide you the rate impact of these three projects. So the $4 million design engineering of the water treatment plant and SCADA upgrades is a 6.25 to 8.5% impact on rates because it's just pure debt service. There's nothing retiring that can take up that spot. The $3 million for water pipe replacements, that is going to be before the town to discuss at the special town meeting in November, that would have an impact of 4.7 to 6.3%. There's another $2 million water pipe replacement project in the capital plan for fiscal '21 that, if it's reported out favorably by Capital Planning Committee and the Board also favorably decides to put it on the warrant in April, would have a 6.2 to an 8.5% impact. And the range on that impact is whether it would be financed through Clean Water Trust or financed through regular financing. And as you saw, Clean Water Trust, we don't always get approved and there is, it is paperwork intensive and there are fees associated with it.
Nancy, why is the one that's less money having a larger impact?
The $2 million? I may have flipped them. It's the only thing I can think of. I may have flipped the $3 million range with the $2 million range.
And would the SCADA upgrades at all have a positive impact? You know, probably not measurable.
I think they would have a positive impact on the electricity use as well as the overall-
Labor, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I think that would-
It could save us on labor because like one of the examples, the Krailman tank, sometimes that overflows and the way we know it's overflowing is the neighbor calls up, calls the water plant and says-
Right, it's primitive.
It's very primitive. So if we were able to control that by SCADA and say, once it hits here and a guy could press a button and shut it off, it would obviously be savings, manpower, water and a lot of other areas, yeah, as well as safety. I mean, it's-
Probably couldn't measure it, but just, yeah, right.
It'd be, it'd be a huge improvement to the system that we have now.
All right, sorry.
Sorry, I was just trying to look that up to see if I flipped them.
So the, the SCADA is, that's for the whole system because the whole system in general, not just the current water treatment plant, right? Because we're talking about-
It's throughout the system. I don't have the details on it at the moment, but it is throughout the system.
Because we're talking about eventually having to replace the current water treatment plant. So I'd hate to invest $4 million into a building that's going to have to be replaced in a couple of years.
If, if that's the case, you know, obviously we wouldn't, we wouldn't invest the money in, in the building itself.
Well, what percentage of that 4 million is for SCADA? Everyone's looking at you, Sean.
No?
I, I wouldn't have-
I don't, I don't have that information.
That's beyond my ability.
I mean, is it most of the 4 million for the design and engineering?
Of what?
Of the new- The water treatment plant?
Yes.
I don't think SCADA in the past has been that. I mean, it's in the hundreds of thousands, right?
But, but water is far less-
It's incredibly expensive, especially starting from nothing, a SCADA system, fresh install is incredibly expensive.
And that's what we're doing here.
Yeah, yeah, they are without any SCADA systems.
But it would be transferable to a new treatment plant?
Treatment plant, but you'd still have to do it to the wells, to the tanks, to the pump station.
Right.
You know, you'd still-
And is that what part of this, this fee is for, is for all the wells and the-
I believe so.
Yeah. I'm sure they can all talk to each other.
Yeah.
Nancy, the, the 4 million, that's been approved already and, and you're saying that's not in the chart at, the first chart, or the bar chart?
Correct.
The debt?
Correct.
Even though we know it's approved already?
Yeah. So the 3 million is the range of 4.7 to 6.3. The 2 million is a range of 3.1 to 4.2.
Okay. But the 4 million aren't, you haven't incorporated in the-
No.
Okay.
Because we talked about it two sessions ago, that that's waiting on the water study to give that better direction. So we didn't want to incorporate in the rates. But I just, when we talked at the last rate discussion, we were talking about a 15.2% increase. And the question was the $8 million for the green sand filter, well, 17A that you spoke about earlier in this meeting, whether we could split that up over two rate sessions, which is definitely something that the Board can do, but the Board also just needs to be aware of these other big-ticket items that are behind this one, that you could end up collapsing them into one another. So we still can have that, that is still an option on the table to, rather than doing the 15.2, which is the 1.25, 3 million for the emergency water treatment plant upgrades and the 8 million green sand facility at well 17A. So those were the two projects that we talked about. I know Selectman Karen was talking about perhaps only doing 6.25% for the 8 million green sand filter in the rates. And that's what is before you tonight, whether or not you want to move forward with the 15.2 and build those two projects, the debt service for those two projects into the rates, knowing what you have coming, or if you want to mediate it, ameliorate it.
So-
Mitigate it. I knew that there's a warrant coming.
So the, of these, of these increases, the four, three and two. Four could be next year's conversation?
Yeah, the $3 million water pipe, we'll be discussing that. If that were to pass the town meeting in November, we would be discussing that as part of next year's rates, definitely.
In the spring?
Well, we'll probably have this discussion-
Before, okay.
Yeah, in sometime in July to September, depending on-
Twenty, okay.
So the 4 million, that's going to wait on that water study, so that could take off, but I don't really see that and I wouldn't want the Board to build that into its rates till we actually have a cost for that, a hard cost. And the $2 million water pipe replacement, if that were approved in April and they had design money, that again could move quickly along and be a fall project.
So none of these three points are under consideration tonight?
No, it's just to give you an idea of what's on the-
What's coming.
Immediate horizon.
Okay.
So we're back to the recommendation that we had before you at the last meeting, which was those two projects, the debt service for those two projects, and whether you want to incorporate the full debt service for both of them or if you want to do something of a version of that. And the following slide, you have a comparison of the water rates of the surrounding towns and where that would put Situate.
So is this enterprise fund, I don't remember off the top of my head, at least breaking even without-
It is.
So there's no, there's no rate increase, it's only for capital projects?
Yeah, the rate increase is, you were correct, completely driven by the debt service.
So as Karen was just bringing up, it looks like the 4 million has been approved.
It's approved, but it's not recommended to be incorporated in the rates yet because we haven't awarded any contracts. We don't know what the full cost of those contracts are going to be based on the results of the water study.
The 3 million probably won't happen this year. Probably be 2021. And the 2 million is definitely 2021.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So we're talking about raising water rates tonight and it's October. Are we also be having a rate increase discussion in the spring?
No.
The rates will go up every year.
Right, but this is October and are we talking about, so we wouldn't be talking about increasing rates until next October?
Or hopefully not at the 11th hour. Hopefully sometime in-
Summer.
August, September.
Summer.
Because it normally takes several sessions-
Right.
-to go back and forth with the Board as to, you know, take a look at this, delve a little bit deeper into that and bringing those back. So is this particular rate session is going to three sessions, even though the second one didn't count because we never talked about it?
We just stayed up late.
I mean, it took a six-week cycle to get there.
Right, I just want to be clear in my own mind that we're not raising rates-
No, there is no reason to-
Twice in six months or something.
Six months, no.
Thank you.
Well, years ago, Sean, you remember, we said for the next five years, they're going to go up, you know, whatever it was, five or 10% a year for the next four years.
Right.
Which is really what we're facing. We just don't know what the number's going to be. Every year, the rates are going to go up something because we have all these capital projects that we have.
They have to. They have to be done.
So.
And eventually you'll catch up. But I mean, it will happen.
In our lifetime?
In our lifetime, yes. Seen those bonds issue and mature and really felt young about it.
So the suggestions for rate increases are, why don't you try and summarize those, Nancy?
The suggestion for the rate increase is a 15.2% rate increase to incorporate the debt service for the emergency water treatment plant and the green sand facility. Also before the Board would be to change the current standalone fees for several items and increase those. I don't know if you want to get into them yet or not. Those are not big moneymakers, but they have not been updated with, when the other rates were looked at. So they should be looked at and we provided examples of other systems and what their current fee structure is. And this would also align the damage meter fee with the new meter fee, the single meter fee policy that was adopted in the last meeting that was at the recommendation of the Water Resources Committee.
We'll do what the rates tonight.
We voted to 500, right?
Yeah.
Can I ask one question about that? Only, only thing we didn't have a chance to revisit is, I think Kevin, you mentioned for number five, which is to do the $50 for removal installation of a meter for turn-off, turn-off service, which I totally get that the Department should be compensated for that. I believe there was a comment that the fire chief has a little concern, was it the fire chief? Somebody was concerned that people, oh, no, Kevin, it was you.
I was concerned about it.
Kevin, you said that.
That people would be doing on, they're on the save the 50 bucks.
Right.
Which could do more damage to the services and I think that's why it was originally at a zero cost.
Do you still feel that way?
Yeah, could you talk a little bit more about that? Because that, I went home and thought about that and I was like, we don't want the- Yeah, but if they break it, they got to get a new meter- Then we got- Which is a $500 fee.
Well, we like to handle our own meters because there's a gate bell-
Oh, I understand.
-outside there and if somebody get on the gate, I mean, Sean disagreed with me, Sean Anderson, but if somebody get on the gate and didn't know what they were doing and snapped it and said, oh, well, and it was before the meter, we might know about that all-
Winter or whatever.
Sand, it might run, water might run in there, or even if it's just cracked, if they, you know, sometimes we have the McGill Gorilla Effect where guys crank hydrants or crank gates and they, and they actually break them. And that's, that was my big concern and I think that's why the town always left it at zero cost. We would rather be the ones handling it because if we knew there was a break, we could, we could fix it and save the water, especially where Pan Marshfield and Humrock.
And we did mention during the presentation that Edmonton Rockland Water Works, and I also think Aquarian, have a fine so that if someone other than a Town of Situate staff member touches the water line, you know, so they try to turn it on or turn it off themselves, it's a $300 fine. So we weren't proposing that, but that was what they put in place. So if somebody went out there and did it, then only do you have to replace the meter, but you also have this fine for having done it on your own.
Hmm.
To try to dissuade people from doing it.
Makes sense to me. But it's your recommendation that we go forward with a charge or not? I mean, it-
That was my only concern. I know there's a cost associated with it, I was just, I was more worried about damage, people trying to do it themselves to save the 50 bucks. We've seen a lot of pipe in certain areas where, I mean, they use an irrigation pipe to save money putting the stuff in and if you added a $50 fee on there, I'd be, I'd be worried about it, or even a $100 fee, turn it on, turn it off, especially where it's before the meter. If it was after the meter, I wouldn't mind, it'd be, you know, they'd be billed for it, but there's no way for us to track it. And we have so many leaks down there, it's, it's kind of tricky.
Do you have any idea how many you actually have to go and manually turn on and off? Do you have any sense of that?
There was a couple hundred.
Oh, yeah, easy, a couple hundred because I know we actually get to the point where we have a couple of guys down there full-time. We set, we set Humrock days for Fridays, you know, or we tried to do it Fridays and sometimes it goes Thursday and Friday because there's no sense of guy going to Humrock and then coming back and then meeting again. We just, we leave a couple of guys down there, all day to turn on and turn off.
And that was our point, was that it's, it's labor-intensive to do this.
Well, I think, you know, we try it.
Try what? The fee?
Yeah. And then if Kevin finds that there are a lot of manual things happening, we can always come back and revisit it.
Yeah, if you only had, you had 200 people request it last year and only 100 people requested this year.
Yeah.
Pretty much assuming that some people are doing it DIY.
But I-
I think you've got to put the fee, the penalty in, in place as well.
And we, you can certainly, the Board can certainly add a fee. I have no problem with the Board adding a fee.
Well, I, I feel as though they, if you, if we send a letter to all the homeowners that we normally do the turn-on, turn-off and explain why we're imposing this fee and that, you know, it's, it's simply the cost of doing, of doing it for them and it is a service to the homeowner and at the risk of them breaking it. And if they break it before the meter, doesn't the water run and run and run and all of a sudden they get this huge water bill?
Before the meter?
No, because it's before the meter.
Oh, it's before the meter, so we don't even know.
We never know it's leaking.
Right, right.
And my fear was it would go all, and that, a lot of that water's, we're being billed by Marshfield, so they don't care what it is, we're being billed at a higher rate than-
Well, more than 50 bucks.
In the sand.
Yeah.
What about professional plumbers doing it? Turn it off, turn it on? I mean, that has happened for many, many years.
It has, we usually use, you know, our guys do it. They call, the professional plumbers will call our guys to come and witness it or to be involved in it with the turn-on, turn-off. You know, sometimes our guys have the right touch, turn them on and they're delicate with them because they know if they break it, and it's usually on a Friday, they're going to be there all night fixing it or-
Right, right, okay. Just trying to think, and then if a plumber does it in Humrock, for example, those meters, do they go back to the water department just for storage for the winter and then go back?
No, they stay at the, they stay at the homes.
Right, okay.
But a plumber would still call, call our guys to do the actual manual shut-off in the road.
Okay, all right.
Are we voting that fee tonight?
Yeah. It was number five on the suggested motions.
Okay, so on that one, I would say not to do it. It's probably not worth the 10 grand to have somebody break something and lose twice that amount of water. If that's what you think could likely happen, then I would say I would go with your recommendation. My opinion.
Is that your recommendation, Mr. PDW Director?
It's a concern I had. I didn't look at the revenue it would be generating as compared to, as compared to what the cost of the water would be if we did have a leak. Obviously, we want to conserve as much water as possible and anytime we're working on our system, I'd rather have, you know, my guys do it than somebody trying to pull it. But if there is a $300 fine included?
That's if you find where they did it.
Don't we cover that with the damaged meter fee if we raise, if we raise that to 500 and someone messes with it and they break it?
Well, the meter's not damaged, it's the turn-off and shut-off that they have out in the street.
Okay.
And how do you know who did it?
Right.
Let me, I always have those wrenches though.
All it takes is one and I'm sure it'll be fantastic. Right?
Tony.
I'm sorry, I always thought you'd turn the water off and on your house inside the house, not outside.
Yeah, like a T-wrench.
Don't send me out there, I guess.
Some people do have that set up where they have a plumber come in and turn it on and off and drain the whole house. and off and drain the whole house.
Yeah.
You know, some don't. Some, we turn it on or we turn it off. So, I mean, either or, if we tried it and see how it goes, that was my concern that I brought up when I came up as an issue.
All right. So, let's get to the meat of the issue. So we have to, so it's a 15.2% increase is what they're recommending for the two projects that are already approved and in the works. The emergency repairs, what already happened, and the green sand filter, which has already been engineered, right? Has it already been...
Not to bed right now, was it?
Not to bed.
It's getting ready. The only thing that's held up is the...
Anyone have a, I don't have the motion in front of me. Which number is that, Karen?
Number one.
It's number one on page 37.
Anyone have any further discussion or any opposition to raising the fees by 15%?
No, unfortunately. It's work that we have to do, and just want to thank Nancy and everyone for doing extra work to identify if there was anything additional that could be done.
And perhaps next year, if the projects aren't moving as fast, it won't be at that level.
And this is after the 5, the 607 is after the 15.2% increase? The ranking of the annual rates?
Yes, yeah. Move that the board of selectmen vote to increase water usage rates by 15.2% as shown on the attached rate sheet effective for the second quarter of fiscal year 2020 billing cycle.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Any other, do you want to discuss any of these other suggestions or...
So the standalone fees, we're just recommending that the damaged meter fee be brought into same level as the single meter fee, and that we update the backflow and fire sprinkler fees from $25 to $50, and we gave you examples of surrounding districts where this fee hasn't been touched in many years. And around us, it's anywhere from $75 to $100.
Do you know what the anticipated revenue would be from that?
It's not...
Not a lot. I was curious in the impact.
One-time fee on that or is it annual?
The fire sprinkler is, I believe, a one-time, and then, but the backflow is annual.
All right. Time of motion for number two.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to increase the $250 damage meter fee to $500 as of October 15, 2019.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. So now that's in line with the other fee structure. Do we want to increase these other three services dominantly?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then make a motion.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to increase the $25 backflow and fire sprinkler fees to $50 as of October 15, 2019.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to add a new fee of $40 for a final meter reading as of October 15, 2019.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. And lastly...
Move that the board of selectmen vote to add a new fee of $50 for removal reinstallation of meter, AKA turn on, turn off fee as of October 15, 2019.
No seconds? So we will not move forward with that one. All right. Onto the transfer station.
Okay, so we're back to slide two of the presentation, so sorry to make you jump around. Again, we're going to start with an expansion, expense reduction analysis. Right now, there are four full-time personnel at the transfer station. Currently, any absence, sick, vacation, has to be backfilled with highway or public grounds personnel, and if it's on a weekend, this requires overtime, so there really isn't any play in the personnel lines. In materials and supplies, again, we've discussed what those are. The main driver in these is the purchase of pay-as-you-throw bags. We could purchase in lower quantities. This could create a situation where supplies are unavailable when requested for retailers, so that, that's kind of a trade-off. The fuels and lubricants could also be reduced by approximately $5,000 based on the current budget level to the experience that we're seeing in that line. Under purchase of services, and we'll come back to those potential reductions, electricity required monitoring, repair and maintenance in the South Shore Recycling Cooperative. That first bullet, the reduction of hauling costs would be $110 a ton for every ton we don't have to incur for CND, and the CND generates net revenue of $90 a ton. So if we limit our CND, what we take at the transfer station, we will eliminate the $110 a ton cost, but where we make $90 a ton, we will lose that revenue stream. The other thing to look at would be the elimination of the membership in the South Shore Recycling Cooperative. That would save the membership fee, which is about $4,800, but it would also affect such programs such as the Household Hazardous Waste Day. So I didn't think that would be something that would be of interest to the board. Again, vehicle service could potentially be reduced by $5,000. That line seems to be budgeted above where the current costs are. We were looking at vehicle equipment parts and had a breakdown, so we took that out of the presentation. So the next slide is a perfect slide for 9:35 at night. I tried to add every single color in the rainbow and all kinds of symbols. The board had asked us to look at the historical tonnage disposed for CND, so Sean very happily gave me 2015 through August of 2019 by month. In July of 2018, there was a rate increase to the CND rate of 4 cents a pound, which equates to $80 a ton. So those are all the numbers in red. So you can see, as soon as that rate increase went into effect, there was a decline in our tonnage, and then our tonnage returned. Depending on how you look at that, it could be because it gave, a couple of months gave time for contractors to build it into their estimates for their customers, so they were able to come back. Or it could be they, it wasn't worth wherever they were going. I know Sean had brought up the fact that there is a private CND place in Braintree. They quote, based on what you're bringing in and how much of it, so it's hard to judge with them. The yellow block in there, I wanted to bring to your attention because it is out of kilter with the tonnage per month from other years, and that's because of Riley.
Because of who?
Riley, Storm Riley. So that storm hit in March, so that's why you're seeing additional tonnage.
I thought it was because they knew it was coming.
Yeah, and that's, but it's interesting, so it's kind of one of those things where if you don't know what was going on at the time, so we, Sean and I were trying to figure out why June had 540 tons, and we'd never had 540 tons. It's because the summer, people arrived and they were like, yikes, and started throwing stuff out. So that's why when you look at March to June of the following year, it looks like our tonnage is down, but when you're comparing it to the prior year, it is because there was no major storm. But if you look at the year above that...
So you look at 216, too.
It's similar. So that's why I added the arrows, not just because I wanted to torture with colors and arrows.
It's that 103 inches of snow.
So I gave you calendar year and fiscal year tonnage, just so you would have a feel for where it is. So it is an extremely busy slide, but it's a very useful slide. I do apologize for the business. So I did do a sensitivity analysis based on what the board had requested. At a pre-July 2018 rate of $120 and $20 a ton and a disposal cost of $91 a ton, we were making, on average tonnage, we were making revenue of $76,000. We could afford to lose 68% of our tonnage at the new rate of $200 a ton with the net revenue of $90 a ton. So when we raised our rates in July of 18 by that 4 cents per pound, we were able to lose a significant amount of tonnage and still maintain our revenue stream. And the same is true now.
Isn't that good?
All right. I'm just making my little notes section a little bit bigger. Using the same average tonnage of 2,646 tons and the current rate of 210, the net revenue was $238,000. So we can afford, if we were to raise our rates, we could afford to lose 18% of our tonnage before we would be making less revenue than if we had done nothing, and our tonnage would stay the same. If we raise our rates to $240 a ton, which means net revenue of $130 a ton, we could afford to lose, and I use afford to lose in quotes, 31% of our tonnage before we would be in a worse position.
But we won't get the increase that we need to...
So we would, if we take in less tonnage, but we, it's not up to the 18% or the 31%, there's less wear and tear in the equipment, less issues, less for the personnel to have to deal with. But as we saw from before, our rate did, our tonnage did rebound.
Right.
So Sean and I were looking, Marshfield still is at $150 per ton, and they were talking about raising their residential rate on their bills, but they didn't talk about changing their commercial CND rate. So they are our direct competitor, and they would be markedly lower than us. So, but you have to buy a sticker there. I think it's a $100 sticker.
And I don't think out of town people can get stickers in Marshall, can they?
I, it looked like they could, but...
I've never heard of anyone trying.
Don't tell anybody.
You can get a commercial sticker, but they might limit it to somebody in town.
Okay.
Yeah, it didn't, yeah, no, here's your, here's your stuff. I just happen to have their stuff right there. I didn't notice that on that. Kingham definitely, you have to be in town in order to do it, and theirs is 120 per ton. Cohasset is $400 a ton. So it's not like anyone's going to be running there to dispose of their CND, and Sean thought that they probably had its restriction as well, that it would only be in town. So other than Marshfield, Kingston wasn't too bad, and then the Braintree Enterprise. So if you were bringing, doing a lot of construction, it would make sense to price that out.
But some of these, like Braintree, have a minimum as well.
That, their website was very limited as to providing information. They wanted to talk to you. Kingston, sorry, I was just looking at our slide from last time. Kingston doesn't accept non-commercial CND. They won't accept commercial CND, excuse me.
I was going to say what's...
Yeah, I love that. It's like mediate, ameliorate, and we're having an SAT vocabulary problem tonight. So in the transfer station enterprise, we did see that there were two existing budget line items that could be reduced for a total of $10,000 and take the money from those line items and apply it to the hauling cost line. So you're still, to coin a phrase, robbing Peter to pay Paul, but you're not asking for any more money to do it. That would reduce the additional funding request for hauling cost to $104,000. So our revised recommendation, considering this would be going in mid-year, because with this type of increase, you might want to delay until December 1st now, in order to allow people to take it into account when they're quoting out work, is a 2% per pound increase on CND effective December 1st, which would probably generate 61,740, and you'll notice it's a lower estimate, because before we were using a 3,000 pound tonnage. But actually, that, when you look at the last four years, that's higher than what our average is, which is the 2,600. You're making me nervous by looking at your phone. And then an increase on the $80 sticker to $90, which would regenerate an additional $40,000. So as we discussed before, at $240 a ton, a loss of 30% of the tonnage is tolerable until revenue is negatively impact, impacted. And I gave you the local community slide again. Unfortunately, only one of the three enterprises were we able to come back to you with expense reductions to try to address part of it.
Wasn't one of our original options, didn't we have an option where we don't have to increase the sticker fee to residents?
We did until we looked at the average tonnage based on four years rather than the last year.
Mm-hmm.
And the last year included Riley.
All that.
So that was high. And we're considering that this is going in now later than we originally thought, if it were to be incorporated. The board could choose to do nothing or do partial, and then the special town meeting article would be partially funded or completely funded by retained earnings. So if you wanted to just do the CND and see what happened and not touch the sticker and let it run through the rest of the year, we would just make that up, and it's part of the motion for the town meeting with retained earnings, the difference.
I'd really rather not raise sticker prices.
I'm a little nervous. And what do we do for a second sticker? It's nominal, isn't it?
It's nominal. I mean, you could go across the boards. I was just trying to make it simple.
Well, raise the second sticker. Wouldn't make enough of a difference if you left the first one at 80.
No, and I have the numbers of the total stickers sold.
25.
It's 25.
Yeah, we sell just over 4,000 of the $80 stickers.
Everyone gets new vehicles, so what's the process? And I'm not real familiar with our situation, but, so I get a new vehicle halfway through the season.
You have to buy a replacement sticker in that.
$10.
Full value.
Probably 25 bucks, because you're getting another.
25.
And look, it's the endless pile of stuff. So for January 1st through 2018 through January 31st, 2019, we sold 4,050 of the $80 stickers. The additional stickers at $25 were 1,230. The replacement stickers for a new vehicle were 234, and then the senior discount, which we are not recommending be changed, at $55 was 1,355.
Not too many new cars.
No.
Or they peel it off and stick it back on at home, nobody notices.
That's true, too.
Thank you for reminding me, I need a new sticker.
Yeah.
Is it that time of year?
So I guess the idea of having a not, a commercial sticker is a non-starter.
Administratively.
Doing what?
Of having a commercial sticker. Is that a non-starter?
Donald, would we generate enough? I don't know.
We tried that at one point, and it wasn't working out great, because if you're a Situate contractor, you'd buy one for your regular vehicle and put it on your regular vehicle also, so it wasn't much of a difference.
Because it was a second sticker?
No, because they put it on their work truck, the regular residential sticker.
Oh, I see, I see, yeah.
So it'd be kind of hard to judge them, is that your own trash or is that commercial trash? And we tried to keep it all similar, because at one point, we had a diamond sticker that we were putting out there.
Well, except I don't know how many households are getting on the weighing scale to get rid of their household trash, right?
That's all this is.
Well, no, they're not, well, you're talking about MSW, and Tony's talking about CND. So you don't go over the scale with your blue bags.
No, no, I don't.
You're not supposed to.
I'm not supposed to.
With your CND, you do.
Right.
That was just, we put that scale in years ago just to keep things even, because people were going in. We had, it took years to convince Rick Agnew and Anthony to get a scale. They just wouldn't, not here, until finally other towns started to do it. It just, people were just coming in and having a...
Putting everything in.
Well, and I guess my other question is, I don't know how much people know about how much the recycling market has kind of cost us. It costs us money to take some of that, to get some, rid of some of that stuff, right?
It does. It's still less expensive than if it was in household trash, where we're paying just over $100 a ton to CNAS. So it is still a cost savings, but it isn't a revenue generator.
Well, I was just going to say, I think people are still under the impression that people are paying to come and get our glass and our, you know, our newspapers, and they don't know that those markets have basically collapsed.
I think the only thing we get money for is textiles now.
I think cardboard's just a little bit above break even. I mean...
And those used to be a revenue source.
Cardboard, you'd get $100 a, you know, $100 a ton, and now you're lucky if you get zero, or two, a couple bucks.
Nancy, can you remind me, did we adjust the beach stickers? I can't remember. I thought we had that conversation a while ago.
You did make an adjustment to beach stickers, but I thought it was the out-of-town beach stickers that you adjusted.
I don't remember.
They were limited and went up to $300, I think, from $200.
Yeah, I mean, if we were doing all the things people have to come down to buy, then I'd feel a little less enthusiastic, but I think it is nominal.
All right, so I mean, you could choose not to do the change to the sticker price. We'll see how the CND reacts.
So we've got to make up, we have to make up $104,000. Retained earnings is only going to last a short period of time, and it's not really solving the problem. So the risk is you raise the rates for the tonnage and your revenue's going to go down, and you don't get any of that savings. And unfortunately, the beach sticker increase is a lot to the user and doesn't add a lot to the, to the revenue.
Well, except beach sticker doesn't go into the...
Not beach sticker.
Transfer.
You know.
I was going with it.
I'm in the beach.
Transfers. So...
Don't take the beach.
So this kind of splits it in half anyways, where it's only a 2 cent per pound, which nobody looks at. What's that per ton? $40, $40 a ton?
Yes, we go from 200 to 240, which makes us...
Blows us out of the water in terms of.
Yeah, we're still cheaper than Cohasset.
No, but you cannot go to Cohasset.
Right, but I mean, we're still.
Do you go to Marshfield for $40 a tonne?
I don't think you can go to Marshfield. That's just, I, I.
That would be good news.
I was down there last week. I should've asked. Maybe you can now.
Okay, so Sean. Sean was reading their documentation.
What did it say?
In one line, it talked about a resident sticker. And in another line, it talked about commercial fee.
I think they have to be based on.
Alright, well, I would say that we, we do a little bit of both. You know, it costs more to do this stuff and everyone's gotta pay to get it. So, if we raise all on the C and D side, then we're gonna have a bigger risk on our revenue going down, which exacerbates the problem. And, you know, like somebody said, it costs more to do this stuff. So, it goes, it goes up $10. What it is.
And if the people have time to make adjustments, if they're doing certain jobs, whether it be carpentry jobs or cleanup, whatever the case is, they can make adjustments to Nancy's point. So, unfortunately, the consumer picks it out, you know, but at least the person in the middle just passes it along.
Should we push this date past December 1st?
I would bring it in. I don't think anyone.
No, if somebody's bidding now for a job, is that, I mean, that's only six weeks.
But usually.
C and D is quieter in the winter.
But it's also usually the first thing and it's pretty quick, right? You're not, you're not gonna bid a job now and not get to the C and D until December.
Yeah, no. And usually, it's, we're not talking about huge shops because then they have roll-off cans there and they don't, that's not the situation. These are the smaller ones.
Okay, oh, good point.
Even Home Depot now will give you bags and come and get it. I mean.
Question?
Yeah.
Why, you know, just looking at community comparisons, taking Kingston out of the equation, why are our stickers so high in comparison to everybody else? Like, what drives the cost of running our facility to be much higher than Duxbury, Cohasset? Like, where are they offsetting these sticker fees from?
Could be, it could be out of the general fund or, you know, it could be supplemented by the general fund or something.
Marshall has curbside pickup, so there's a trash fee that you pay, which is $340 annually.
Oh, that's $340, so that's huge.
So, you kinda discount them as well.
Yep.
I know in Hingham, I don't pay for a sticker. If you get a second sticker, you have to pay for it, but it's in the, it's in the tax base and they also have a lot more commercial, a bigger commercial tax base.
So, they're taking that. That's what I was, okay.
And Norwell pays out of their general fund, right?
And keep in mind, in some of these cases, you have communities that have a lot of private haulers. So, there aren't as many people going to the dump, transfer station.
Well, they don't go to the dump in Norwell, right?
There is a, there is a facility.
It's a curbside.
It's all curbside, right? It's paid for.
For your appliances, you can go behind.
Pay $10 unless it's gone up. So, if you wanna give it to white goods, you go to the Board of Health to get a sticker. It's $10. You drop them off. It's only open Saturdays and Wednesdays for, I think it's two hours on Wednesdays and half day on Saturday, so.
Now, if you guys leave that out on your curb, the private hauler won't pick that up?
No.
So, basically, the only one of comparison is Duxbury. And I don't, I.
Get any.
Yeah, I don't have an explanation to you, for you as to why they only charge $55. I don't know if they have an enterprise fund for the transfer station. I would tend to think not.
Beach trash as well.
Cohasset has a sticker. It has a sticker.
Do they?
They do.
Who does?
Cohasset has an all-season sticker. I think it's beach and. You don't have anything down for Cohasset?
I didn't see anything on their, in their transfer station rates, but if it's a combined sticker, they may not post it there.
Facility sticker, they call it. I don't know how much it is, though.
That's one way to wrap it.
Well, we can look into it, but unfortunately.
You can only go to the beach if you pay for the trash.
Unfortunately, we have to make up $104,000 and there's not a lot of places to do it unless you wanna raise the bags. Which, I mean, it's still, if you, if you buy a sticker for $90, you take two bags of trash a week to the, to the dump, the transfer station, it's still cheaper than having someone come pick it up for you. So, I think people would rather see $10 here than 50 cents in a bag. Alright, so, can I have a motion to do both the bag increase of $10 and the 40, 40 pounds per tonne on C and D? Unless someone wants to make.
Two cents a pound, like to 10 cents.
And they were different dates, so it depends on whether the board wants to do them as of the same date or different dates. We were doing the sticker at January 1st.
Thank you. Yeah, I am.
So, move the Board of Selectmen vote to increase the transfer station sticker price by $10 from 80 to 90 effective January 1st, 2020.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous?
No.
No?
Oh, no.
Four, one. Ms. Kern is against. And the C and D? I would recommend we do that as of 11-1 instead of 12-1.
I think we need to. I think it's only six weeks. It's only, I don't think.
I thought we were doing the C and D. It's getting late. I would've voted against the sticker increase. So, I would, I could, if we could, yes. I just think I wanna do the C and D and then do the sticker a little bit later.
Well, the sticker's on at 1-1.
Alright, okay, alright. I just think, I, I think what you might see happening is, I live next to you. I'll just buy the sticker this year, Tony. I'll just, you don't have to buy the sticker. Just grab your bags. I don't feel a lot of people do that.
You can do that. You wanna swing by?
No, 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 I'm just saying, I live next to you. I think, you know, there's nothing wrong with that.
That's community.
There's nothing wrong with that, though, right? And not be, you know, you're just, that's safe.
Well, that's wonderful community.
So.
It's usually a big attraction for people to come to the transfer station because we know about it. Anytime we close it, we hear about it.
I know. Take it easy.
Mr. Chair, if I could suggest that because people don't have to buy their stickers until, what is it, March 1st or March 31st, one of those dates?
They go on sale.
They go on sale, but they are included in the tax bills.
What?
That the notation, the notices at bottom are included in the tax bills.
But, we could wait to increase the sticker fee after we see what happens with the C and D because we're not gonna take much money in, on the stickers until March, whatever it is.
Well, then you'd have to, you'd have to double the C and D amount, then.
No.
Do you get many purchases now?
What our point is, you're not gonna see the increase hitting us anyway on January 1st, right?
My issue is, they put a buck slip in with the tax bills, a slip so that you can mail away for your, put in for your transfer station and the tax bills get mailed in December. So, they need to know what the price is for when they create that, that flyer.
Yeah. Do we have to include that in the tax bill?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, Ron.
Oh, yeah.
Forget it. I'll just leave it the way I know it.
I mean, you certainly, you can not do that.
Right.
I mean, that's up to you. If you feel you wanna see what the C and D does, that's, we can do that. We just need to, for the balance of the fiscal '20 budget, we're gonna have to fill that gap with retained earnings.
How much retained earnings, sir?
Probably $40,000 because that's what you're, what we're estimating it.
How much is total in retained earnings? 40,000?
Oh, hold on. It's right here.
I mean, we know that it's gonna go down.
Retained earnings has $396,421. I'm sorry.
How much? I'm sorry?
$396,421. I know you're just throwing these business out to me.
Better than I thought. We used to be paying that. Yeah.
Alright, what do you guys wanna do? We can kick the can down the road and say, I mean, we just raised everything else. We can, we can wait and see what this does. I mean, if you, if you only raise it the two cents, then you don't get the amount of money that you need. I think it's kinda better to tell the people what's gonna happen as opposed to.
And our multiple conversations have been, we think, we have said that we want these enterprise funds to be self-sufficient and that these are mechanisms which bring us much closer, right?
Correct.
Instead of relying on retained earnings to do that. They're not, it's just not good business practice.
I don't believe your hauling costs are going to go down anytime in the near future and our C and D contract is locked in for three years and we have, we're in year two right now.
So, I would like to keep the vote, not revisit the first vote.
Okay. How about a motion on the C and D increase?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to increase the construction debris rate by two cents per pound from 10 cents per pound to 12 cents per pound effective.
12-1?
December 1st, 2019.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous, 5-2-0. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's somber news, but Nancy, thank you for all the work you did into.
Our pleasure.
Trying to see if there was another option. Okay. So, that's new business is approval of the draft 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting schedule. Did anyone have any major concerns on the schedule? It is a little bit flexible, but at least it's a good guideline to go by.
I have my, the annual one that I can never do, which is that second one on February 25th. Because it's a meeting that I have no control over, my annual meeting. I check the date. So, that's the only one.
So, that's, that's three weeks in between, oh, because it's school vacation week in between there?
Yeah.
Well, maybe, yeah, let's see what's on the agenda. If we have to change it to a different night, we can.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all. I just wanna call that out now.
Anyone else have any dates? On your birthday, anything like that?
I was expecting for that, Tony.
Yep, mine.
It is coming up.
One of the big things you'll notice is the budget meetings have been brought much sooner in 2019, so we don't have three meetings a month like we typically do.
Whoever organized that.
Thank you, Nancy.
Great, so we don't have to vote this, do we? It's just a. Looks good. And then, also a discussion vote, which Lorraine just mentioned, is the budget dates, which have moved a little forward, so. Few less meetings. I think we're gonna vote that one, just so all the other committees can plan as well.
I'm sorry, when is the election again? June 13?
June 13th is the election.
The election?
Yeah.
So, the, the town meeting is 4/13.
Yep, okay.
Ooh, that is great.
Can I have a motion to accept the budget calendar?
Move to accept the budget calendar as presented.
Second by Ms. Kern. Further discussions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. We're now on a one-day malt, one-in-malt application. This one is for Oro on 11/16 from 6:00 to 10:00. I thought they were moving in there at the end of September.
Robin actually came into the office today and he's going to move in January 1st.
Oh, really?
And actually, we closed, the plan right now is to close that first week of January and move everything in to.
Close the harbor.
So, he's staying in the harbor till January?
Yeah.
Okay.
He has a lot of holiday.
Saved by a lot of holiday bookings.
Oh, so that's what these are?
No.
From one days at the new facility.
Yeah.
These particular, you can't have a one day if you have a liquor license on place up. So, this is actually being rented out by the owner of the property and Robin is going to be the caterer.
For just this one day, for 11/16?
Yes, the 11/9 was canceled. That was on the agenda.
Okay.
Can I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve one-day wine and malt license to Restaurant Oro for an event at 227 Chief Justice Cushing Highway on November 16, 2019 from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. By saying Restaurant Oro, is that?
The name of his business.
That's the name of his restaurant, Oro. It's the name of his business.
I know, but I thought he couldn't do it if he had a liquor license.
Well, he is not doing it on his own property. It's the owner of the building.
He's the caterer.
I received the letter today. It's the owner of the building and he hired him as the caterer.
Yeah, so my, my question is, should the name be in the owner, not in Oro?
It's usually the caterer.
No, it's usually the caterer.
Yeah, the liquor liability.
He's got a caterer's license as well as he has.
Well, no, it's the restaurant, but we let restaurants.
Cater.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. And then, we have another one for Family Crest Catering on the 10th.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day, one-in-malt license to Family Crest Catering for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on November 10, 2019 from 2:00 to 6:00 PM.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Great, so now we have a couple of board committee appointments. I know we're gonna do the Council on Aging tonight, which someone said we needed to do. CPC we talked about. Okay. So, let's start with, the first one is the Affordable Housing Trust.
I work with Ruth. She's great, so I will move to reappoint Ruth Wagner to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term of three years or until successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. The next one is CPC, CPC and it's two spots and two people.
Move to appoint Suzanne Brennan to the Community Preservation Act Committee for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kern. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, 5-0.
Move to appoint Margaret Meg Stillman to the Community Preservation Act Committee for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Second by Ms. Kern. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Can we look at the Council on Aging, can't even speak, Council on Aging in total?
Reappoints and?
Yeah.
Can we do the coastal advisory one first?
Yes.
Oh, wait, there's two.
I think we have two openings, though.
Yes, you do.
And those are the only two applicants? Coastal advisory, coastal.
They meet the highland, lowland?
Yeah.
Inland.
Upland.
Move to appoint James Cannavan to the Coastal Advisory Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Move to appoint Stephen Tripp to the Council Coastal Advisory Commission for a term of three years or until the successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Alright, now we'll go to Council on Aging.
So, there's two renewals and two openings.
14?
The two reappointments, just so you, the board knows, Leslie James and Janice Desmond have served for a while and at the meeting last week, they were reorganizing because of the time and they were named, they were named co-vice chairs. And JD Miller retained his chairmanship, but he didn't wanna do it indefinitely, so they decided that they would do vice chair to help with the heavy lifting.
But they're both up for renewal.
They're both up for renewal, so. Where's that?
Also, just to add, we have the Council on Aging bylaw change, which allows, if it passes a town meeting, at that time, we will consider additional people.
Right, two alternates. Yeah, that's a good point.
Mention that to these people.
Yeah.
So, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We could choose to do that.
Could we do that? Just hang on? Let it go the way it's going?
No, well, let's, let's appoint and get their committee full and then address, address anything additional afterwards.
Yeah, to Lorraine's point, we'll have the opportunity after town meeting to extend reopen? How would we do that? Just reopen?
Well, you would, you would add.
Well, it's not gonna be effective till then anyway, so you can't appoint them until something is approved at town meeting.
Right.
What I'm saying, instead of sending up new applications.
Right.
Yeah, no, we'll take a look. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the good news is, is that there's a lot of really talented people who wanna step up. So, it's a hard choice. But, given all of that's going on with Council on Aging, they very much need a complement of the board right now. Would you like to proceed, Mr. Chair?
Well, let's do the renewals, I guess, right?
Well, if, just 'cause you're renewing doesn't mean you automatically make it. So, if somebody wants to make a recommendation for one person, then we.
I'd actually like to recommend that they both stay on for continuity and they're very much committed to this board, the reappointments.
Just do them one at a time? Just do them one at a time?
They're together on the motion, but I can do that.
Move to reappoint Leslie James to the Council on Aging for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, 5-0. So that was James?
That was Leslie James, yep.
Okay. Someone else want to make a motion for somebody? Not Karen, you can.
Move to reappoint Janice Desmond to the Council on Aging for a term of three years or until successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Okay, so there are now two more spots, and there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 applicants.
I think we received a lot of endorsements for Maude.
Six, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
Tony, can I make another motion?
Yes.
Move to appoint Susan Kelly to the Council on Aging for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days.
I'll second that, I have a big yes next to that.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. And one.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Maude Willsteed to the Council on Aging for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. So for those of you that did not make it, your, doesn't mean anything about your qualifications, there's only so many slots and so many good people, but there will be the opportunity to get involved, especially after this special town meeting and the guidelines change for the Council on Aging, so please stay involved, go to the meetings, they're all open meetings, and.
Well, in town meeting passes, there'll be three additional associate members that we can, right? Is it three?
If they want to expand it to nine, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Oh, that's right, seven to nine and two alternates.
Right. So if you didn't hear that, if it passes at a town meeting, then the board can decide to expand it from seven to nine, and there will also be the opportunity of associate members as well, so that could expand.
I think the board is going to not give them a chance to re-submit one last time. In the meantime, we advertise openings, existing openings on committees, and give people a last chance to renew, so my plan is to lay it back next week, when the press release is put in the paper, maybe tomorrow, Ruth, and post them online, and, because we still have, we have some new resignations now with the people that maybe chose not to re-enlist or remuniate on the position, and I'm still waiting on some people to speak that, I've been pounding some of the chairs. So I'm hopefully planning to wrap this up the second meeting in November, because the first meeting is a special.
Yeah, it's been a long time, okay.
So, because.
Do you do it on the town Facebook, too?
Yes.
You do, right, okay.
All right, so we'll be seeing something about that, probably we'll be seeing something about that, and then we'll be rounding it up. I've had two applicants so far for the Charter Review Committee.
Two?
Two.
Okay.
And, you know, we're hoping to wrap that up also by the end of October, and then that will be on, we'll be inviting those people into the debate at the second meeting in November, and hopefully.
But we need five.
Excuse me.
We need more than two, so.
Yeah, so anyway, that's interested in Charter Review should get their applications in. I mean, we just published it, so.
Right. So that's a very important committee, so I'd like, anyone that's interested, please put an application, and it's going to look at the whole charter and really make some of the recommendations for changes that we've talked about at several meetings, so please get involved. All right, discussion of the 2002 annual town meeting date, that was April 13th.
We did that, right?
We didn't.
You did the town election date, you didn't do town meeting date.
Didn't do town meeting.
Oh, sorry.
So can I have a mo, there's got to be a motion.
What is it, April 13th?
Yeah.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve April 13th as the date of the annual town meeting.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item is on, is just a discussion, typically we have an annual treat where we meet usually off-site, sometimes over the weekend, to kind of discuss our goals and our priorities, and, so if you all can look at your calendars and just email me some dates that you can do, when would it be?
On a Saturday.
Yeah, typically a Saturday, early morning.
Are you thinking in the next couple of months or in longer?
I was just trying to figure that out. Probably the earlier the better. We're October 15, so maybe before Thanksgiving? If.
The only Saturday I'm here is the Saturday before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Or the Saturday after, but that's a holiday for folks. I stick around, so. I'm not around the other two.
The other 10?
No, the other two. You said November, let's see.
Well, just send me whatever dates you can do.
They all work for me, Tony.
Great. All right, liaison reports. Anybody have, Karen, anything?
No, I want it to be done by 10:15, shoot. I know, you lost the bell.
Liaison? Sean?
No. Quick. To reminder, on Tuesday, on the October 22nd, 6:30 gates, the master plan was, community meeting, really encourage as many people to come as possible, and also anybody interested in helping out with Meals on Wheels, Council on Aging loses a lot of snowbirds in the winter, and they're very short people, and I think it's Tuesdays that they deliver, but you can check with Council on Aging if you have just a couple of hours to help out, they really need it.
Is it just delivering food?
Just delivering the food.
Can we put that on our Facebook, Lorraine?
A lot of people follow you on Facebook, so I think it's good to do that.
On our town website. Linda can give you the specifics on that one. Oh, and one very exciting, I think it's in the.
Do people need to be security checked?
What?
Do people need to be security checked for that job?
I don't think so.
Well, I'm thinking if you're delivering food.
I defer to Linda, I don't know.
If you're dealing with the elderly or children, you're supposed to be Cory.
Cory checked, yeah, yeah. But that's easy process.
Shaun's out.
And I think we're going to cover this on correspondence, but I'll just jump to it. The Beach, the Beach Commission had a contest for the new beach sticker design, and it was selected, I think, last week or recently, and there's a picture of it in the, in the correspondence, I don't, hopefully you got it.
Yeah, it looks great.
It looks like a Dory, it's very similar to the C Situtet logo. It's sideways, you have to turn your head.
Very nice.
Now, wait a minute. So that's cool, and it was designed by Peg Lee.
Peg Lee.
Who was a very talented professional illustrator here in town.
Looks great.
It looks awesome. Good job.
And there were a lot, there were a lot of really cool ones, so.
They said there were like 70 or something?
Well, maybe they can save some for like next year.
They should change it up every year.
Yeah, it's, they're, they're.
Maybe they could put them in, all of them in the Mariner.
Because it's cool.
What?
Maybe you could put all of the submitted stickers into the Mariner page.
All of them? All the entries, there was like 75 of them.
Yeah, well.
Content?
Content, yeah, I think that would, I think we just put the winners.
We could just read about that carnival in Quincy again. Ruth, you do a great job.
Just got that look.
Two liaison, quickly liaison reports, financial forecasting got together and went over a lot of things that we discussed in the capital plan tonight, and looking forward to fiscal year 2021. And then the Veterans Services Meeting had their first meeting last week, very good meeting, energetic group, ready to pick up the reins where the board wasn't active for a while. Don Knapp was there and the whole committee, so looking forward to what they're going to move forward and do, so.
Can I ask you a question?
I want to.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted, with regards to that, I had a request that we sort of think about when there are fireworks in town, specifically that private one that we approved, which we don't necessarily do, but to come up with some sort of notification to some of the veterans when there are going to be events that involve loud noises like that, that could be startling to them. No, seriously, and it was asked that we, we feel a bit more proactive in letting folks know that something like that might be happening, and so maybe that's something we can do through the Veterans Council as well, which we're approving.
That's a very good suggestion.
Yeah, it was.
Tony, can I just ask, if you have given any more thought, are we going to have, probably not going to have a special or meeting, or are we going to incorporate in one of the next meetings the shelf regulations?
Yeah, so we are, we're going to have a meeting outside of our normal one for that, so we don't go on, you know, because it's probably going to take about an hour plus discussion. The two dates that Lorraine proposed were the 22nd and the 29th, I think.
Yeah.
And the 22nd is not doable because that's the master plan meeting.
Right.
And we don't want to take people away from that.
Maybe the 29th.
The 29th, I don't know if that works with everyone's schedule.
That's for me.
I'm here.
Can everybody do the 29?
Yeah, two weeks from tonight.
So we don't have a meeting?
No.
For three weeks?
Oh.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, you have an November 5th special time, and then we talked about it a couple months ago.
I'm here, I just, can we do it at, you know, like 7, because I'm, I have a hard time getting here.
So why don't we?
29 at 7:00 p.m.?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll do it here.
Okay.
Great.
In this room?
Yeah. I think it held.
If you expect a large crowd, we could always move it, right? Yeah, maybe probably wouldn't.
Yeah, I think they accommodated it fine last time.
Yeah.
It is going to be just about.
The next one is approval of the minutes. I, I made some changes, Lorraine, but I don't think I sent them to you.
No.
So should we, okay, so should we hold off on doing it?
No, you could do it with.
With the changes? It was minimal, but. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the minutes with changes?
So moved.
Second by?
I'm not voting for that.
Ms. Curran, when she wakes up?
I'd vote for that.
What?
What are the changes?
That's what I said, to wait, and she said to vote it. All right, let's postpone it, and we'll, we'll let.
I'll resend my motion.
All right, Eeyore.
Can I have a motion to adjourn and sign documents?
Absolutely.
Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There are rules, guys.